So today is Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. Our combined work session and special meeting calling to order. And just as notice to the public that council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice on any of the agendized items. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deasy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
Councilmember Shimoney.
Here.
All right. Councilmember Salas, would you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Honored to do so, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as we are.
Thank you. And the mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. Councilmember Shimoney, would you please read our land acknowledgement?
Be my honor. Thank you, Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands still inhabited by native descendants border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacy, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. We're down to agenda item four, our general public participation, and like to invite Tio Melist up to the front.
Good afternoon, honorable mayor and council. I have a very short comment to make. It has to do with the recent adoption of the ATMP a week ago by council, and I want to commend everybody for that. I thought it was a big step forward in the city planning process, and I also commend Martin Ince for his role in shepherding that forward to you all after all these years. And at a recent bicycle advisory committee meeting, I asked a question about whether the city currently participates in what's now allowed as a bicycle commuter subsidy program nationwide, and was told that they weren't, that the city wasn't. So as an incentive program, it's a subsidy that allows people who decide to commute to and from work by bicycle, a small monthly stipend if they meet certain criteria, and they can qualify to receive up to $20 per month from their employer. It doesn't cost the employer anything because it comes from a revision in the IRS code that took place in 2008 under the Congress, and has been a viable subsidy that's possible since, I believe, January 1st, 2009. So I work for the U.S. Geological Survey. I live here in town at 112 North Aztec Street, and I've been participating. I'm a bike commuter myself, and I've been participating in this program through my employer since about 2010, and just thought it would be good to let the council and the mayor know that this is something that the community might want to know more about if they don't already know about it, and it could be part of an incentive program tied to the implementation of the ATMP. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tio. Appreciate you, yeah, bringing that forward to us and letting us know about it. All right. And I'm not seeing anyone online for general public participation. So we are down to agenda item five, review of draft agenda for the November 15th, 2022 city council meeting. Councilmember Assam.
I just said I don't have any comments.
Well, I do have a comment. It's sort of just to raise awareness, might be a question. We have an appointment next week for the Heritage Preservation Commission. If I remember correctly, we have five applicants for five positions, and I know in the past that hasn't always satisfied us in terms of giving us options or choices for those appointments. So, City Clerk, maybe this is a question for you. Can you just review what our options are in that scenario?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Aslan. You are correct. We typically don't bring forward five applications for five positions. This particular commission has been struggling to meet quorum, which is why we're bringing those forward now. As the appointing body, you have the ability to make five appointments. You have the ability to make two or three and ask, you know, for additional time to gather more applications. So that is fully within your purview, whatever you feel most comfortable doing.
Great. Well, I'm happy to telegraph that I don't have any particular issues or concerns with any of the applications we have now, but this might be an opportunity for anyone else to raise the concern if they want to. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any concerns with the appointments there, but there's a chance that I won't be here for next week's meeting, and I believe I'm one of the people doing an appointment, so that will kind of delay the process a little bit. It would just mean, I think, coming back for me to do that appointment later, but yeah, just for awareness.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting us know. Anything else? With that, we are down to agenda item number six, our proclamation for the Continental Project. And it's an honor, 30 years running, assisting individuals who, from a education to workforce transition, that it's an honor to be able to have you all here and to have a proclamation. If council would like to join me up front, as well as everyone who's involved in the Continental Project, that would be great. And I did see a really great article in the Daily Sun a few days ago about all of your work. I do have a proclamation here, as well as if anyone would like to say a few words afterward, you're more than welcome to. Every person is valued, with gifts to share and the ability to contribute to a greater good. Opportunities and education for individuals of all skill levels should be made available by nurturing and guiding students with disabilities. They are better prepared for future employment and independence. The Continental Country Club is steadfast in its commitment as a strong community partner, dedicated to uplifting others and encouraging the betterment and success of Flagstaff residents and visitors. And for 30 years, the Continental Project has implemented a successful school-to-work transition program, benefiting more than 600 students with disabilities to receive on-the-job training in positions that increase their professional and interpersonal skills. Now therefore, I am Mayor Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim November 8th as Continental Project Day. And I greatly appreciate you all being here and would welcome if you would like to say a few words about the program.
I'm Dave Penny. I would just like, I'd like to acknowledge the strength behind the program is Continental, but the person who I depended on for strength and ideas and knowledge, Stephanie, come down here. Stephanie was absent for a lot of this due to extreme health issues when we started the program. And I just, you know, she deserves a lot of credit. So, and these young ladies here are just absolutely exemplary of what we've tried to do for 30 years to help them, the students become self-sufficient contributing taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Stay here. 31 years ago, Dave and I put a year into the problem solving and planning of what is now Continental Project, and we put our hearts in it, and it meant the world to us because we knew we were helping kids optimize their independence. And it has made a difference. So we thank every collaborative partner who's been a part of this journey. It's been successful beyond measure. It has been replicated. It's been nationally, internationally honored, and internationally replicated. This program has made a difference in all of our lives. Thank you.
I will add that, since she brought it up, we were invited to present our concept to the U.S. Labor Conference in Washington, D.C. in 1993. And after that, it was replicated in a lot of places nationwide. And thanks to Continental, thanks to all these people and their support.
The risks they took. Back then, this was revolutionary.
Yeah.
It was a big risk, so thank you. Thank you.
Everyone, if we could get a picture up here. Stephanie, if you'd like to, can we come up to the front?
Come on. Come on. Come up front here. Nolan, come on up front. He's currently employed by Continental. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you. Bobby Coryt, I'm the board president. Congratulations. Thank you so much. All right. Just checking.
All right. With that, we are down to agenda item number seven, our Elevate Pre-K Annual Report. Oh, sorry, I forgot to switch that up.
We're good. Well, hello, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Rebecca Serzian, and I am the Senior Director of Strategy and Innovation. Sorry, I forgot my title at Candelen and have been overseeing the Elevate Pre-K project. So let me pull this up for you. And let me say thank you all for having us today, and I'm kicking myself for presenting the same day that it's Election Day, so I will be speedy through the portion of the slides that I have, for sure. And I did want to pause and just say thank you all for your service. We're really grateful for all you do for our community. I'm sure Adam is just planning his vacation, let's be honest, but for the rest of you, thank you for your service. So I have a variety of presenters that will come up with me as well, too. What I want to do today is just kind of give a recap of year one, so we've successfully completed year one of the pilot, want to talk about that. But before we get into the findings and data for that, I want to recap what's happening in the childcare landscape at the Arizona level, but also what's happening in Flagstaff. As talked about it the last time I presented, COVID, of course, put a wrench in many things, but just furthermore exasperated the issues around childcare, and I want to make sure everybody has a good understanding as to why that's really important for our community and for the children and families that are here. So what is included in the childcare landscape? We talk about three big buckets, and that's access, affordability, and quality. So I'd like to kind of frame up our conversation with these three things in mind, but before I do that, I want to talk about two important reports that have come out in the past year, and I sent these ahead of time for you all to read in your quote-unquote "spare time." But they're important because, again, they're highlighting the issues of childcare, not only just for what families need, but how this is impacting communities. So the report on the left, the Early Childhood Education and Care in Arizona, was actually a report put together by WestEd for the Arizona Mayor's Education Roundtable. And this report highlights how childcare has an impact at the city level, and also highlights some of the things that cities are doing to be able to tackle childcare and early childhood education. And of course, Flagstaff's Elevate Pre-K initiative is highlighted in there, but there's also really important data in there that I think would be interesting to look at, just to see what other cities are doing to tackle this issue. The other report on the right, Untapped Potential in Arizona, is put together by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation. They selected four states to take a deep dive into how childcare is really impacting the workforce and the economy. And that's a more robust report, but really has some interesting findings about what's really happening specific to Arizona. So those two, again, are for you, for your reference. I've put in some of the slides in here, but I'll go quickly through them because I know you all have access to them. So first, let's talk about what childcare is, because I want to make sure everybody has a good understanding of that. There's three big categories of where childcare is provided, and the big one that most people know is childcare centers and preschools, and that's, of course, where Elevate Pre-K was framed. But these are centers that are regulated by the state in a similar way that your restaurant is regulated, right? You want to go and make sure it meets basic health and safety standards, that your staff have certain qualifications to work with children. Those things are in place. So those are the childcare centers and preschools we have in our community. But there's also family childcares, and these are actually regulated by the state as well, too. So at-home provider could choose to engage at the state level and say, I want to be a provider, do similar health and safety practices in their home background checks, and they can access subsidies for families to be able to access their care. And then one we don't talk about, but I wanted to bring up before I got into some of the slides, was family, friend, and neighbor care, and we, in the field, call this FFN care. What this is, are these are the people who are caring for children that informally, that don't see themselves as professionals. So this could be grandmas watching the kids while, you know, mom goes to work, or there's a friend down the street that she stays at home with her kids, so my kids go over there as well, too. And this is actually a large bulk of care in Arizona, and is no different than what we're seeing in Flagstaff as well, too. So the U.S. Department of Labor has really examined how these three, you know, the types of childcare and how people are utilizing childcare in their communities. And the big picture trends are, of course, families are focusing on hours of operation so that they can go to work, and who's caring for their children? Is it a trusted adult? Are there some education benefits built into there? And we actually found that families are using different types of childcare. So they're not commonly using just one type and that's it. A lot of times, they're getting picked up from one place and brought to the next, or, again, grandma comes to pick up at the end of the day and they go with grandma for a few hours. There's a lot of shuffling around of scheduling to make things work. This is not a shocker. Cost of care is prohibited. I'll talk about that later. The supply of quality care is particularly inadequate. So not even just talking about what's available out there, but what's actually quality, where you want to send your children to go. And then in every community, there's just a wide variation of supply, cost, and quality. Again, we're talking about that access, affordability, and quality. So what's it looking like in Arizona? In the past year, what we're seeing is the vast majority of children in those top two brackets, no matter what their income is, is being cared for in this FFN category, family, friend, and neighbor care. And it's not necessarily a bad thing. A lot of times, families want to have their infant cared for by, you know, a family member or someone that can come into the home, and that's completely fine, and we want families to make that choice. But a lot of times, what we're seeing in this slide, is the reason they're selecting childcare is for financial reasons. And so they may be settling on, well, I can only do so-and-so who cares for children out of my home, and that's, you know, and that's what I can afford, and that's where they're going. So they're not necessarily making choices based on what they feel is best for their children, but what is best for their financial situation. So let's talk about what's happening in Flagstaff. As far as access goes, we've actually seen an uptick in the seats available for pre-K than last year. We've had a couple centers come back since COVID, which is great. We have one coming up around the corner as well, too, but it doesn't paint the whole picture. Centers have lowered their capacity as to how many children they're keeping because there's just not enough staff out there, and I'm sure this is not news to anybody sitting in this room. But particularly in the childcare sector, it's really difficult work, it's low-paying wages, and we're just not seeing people come back. And so we have centers that, in a classroom, even in my child's classroom, they can take up to, you know, 25 kids technically, but they're limiting down to 13 for quality reasons. We know less children in a classroom is a good thing, but also there's not enough adults to be able to take in more children. And then finally, when we're talking about the piece of access, this doesn't necessarily translate to meeting the needs for families. So some of our highest-quality childcare centers, which we define in Flagstaff as either a four- or five-star rated center as part of Quality First, a Head Start center, or an accredited center, those centers typically have limited hours. They're like, one of our highest-quality centers, it's like a five-star, is Monday through Friday, eight to three. And I don't work eight to three. I don't know if you all worked eight to three, but it's, again, that's why we're seeing that piecemeal care. So just because we're seeing that uptick a little bit in access, it's not necessarily translating to any difference for what families and children have. So in the Mayor's Roundtable Report, they did an analysis of the gap between the care needed and the availability, and I highlighted where Flagstaff was, and we think for the children who may need care but don't have access to a nearby provider, where there are available slots, we're sitting around 29%. And when you line that up compared to the sizes of these other cities, we're not doing fantastic. You may look at it and be like, well, we're not the highest one on this chart. That's pretty good. But when we're looking at it to the size of our city compared to some of these other ones, there's still a consideration of something that we need to do here. So on affordability, average cost of full-time preschool annually is $8,460, and when you start to look at infant and toddler care, the price is very pricey, around $11,000 to $12,000, and there have been several articles painting that this is comparable to college tuition. And so when we're thinking about choosing families of, do I go back to work and do I go to care, or, you know, do I look at a semi-okay childcare that this is, you know, because this is what I can afford, that's where people are making these decisions. So families are spending an average of 13% of their income on childcare in this community. To put it in perspective, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services recommend that that not exceed 7%. So we're seeing that overspend in that area. When you combine that with what people are spending on housing in the community, too, you can see where the pinch is being felt for families. And then most shockingly to me was only 6% of families in Arizona are receiving state childcare assistance. You're probably looking at, and that to me looked really low. I knew it was going to be low, but it was really low, and there's a few different factors that play into there, but I want to talk about why this is playing into Flagstaff. So affording childcare in Flagstaff. Our state has a variety of childcare subsidies that are available, so we have state funding from DES, there are some federal funds for Head Start, and then we have First Things First system, which is the Quality First, and they provide scholarships as well, too. But if you're a single parent in Flagstaff, making minimum wage and working full-time, your monthly gross income is $2,666. And to put that in a perspective, the average monthly tuition for childcare is around $721, and for this income, that would be 27% of your income would be going to childcare. Pull out the housing, right? Just a quarter of your income would be going to that if you're a single parent. So I'm looking at this going, well, yeah, of course, they're going to qualify. This is a single parent. They're working full-time. They're doing all the things. But they actually don't qualify for our state and federal funding sources. DES maximum monthly income taps out at $2,518 for new applicants. And right now, they're at the highest bracket. They're not even at the mid-range of like, well, except to level three or whatever. They are at the max. Head Start, because they are federally funding, they're using that FPL that is available at the federal level, and it's even a lower bracket. Now, they do have some room to be able to accept children from higher-income brackets with some exemptions, but they don't get an automatic qualification. And so, again, a single parent in Flagstaff, making minimum wage, working full-time, does not qualify for any of these existing subsidies, which is why we really need to look at this as a community in Flagstaff. So how this ties all back into our community. I'm talking about working families a lot, but again, this is where these reports are starting to highlight some of these needs. What we've seen, our families have to disengage from the workforce from time to time. Frankly, it forced 71% of parents to miss work or class in the past three months. So families are consistently coming out of the, you know, having to take that time off. It lowers productivity. From, you know, the business standpoint, it doesn't feel very good. And then people are changing their job status because of childcare. So when there's a lack of that available, we've seen people make this shuffle of like, well, no, this job arrangement's not going to work for me anymore. And then from those, from the 22% of working parents planning to exit, more than a third of those will do so because of childcare issues. So again, it just kind of goes back into compounding of how this is affecting our community. And in total, what they found was that childcare issues in Arizona result in an estimated $1.77 billion loss annually, and the prediction from the Mayor's Roundtable Report is, in the future, this could cost us $29 to $45 million. So the last thing I'll talk about, on maybe a happier note, is why the conversation of quality comes into play here. So we talked about families are making decisions on where their children should go based for financial reasons, not what they think is best for their family and their child. But there's lots of research that shows that investing in high-quality early learning has a great return on investment for communities. We start to see kids who are much more school-ready, they're less likely to receive special education, they're more likely to graduate high school, they're less likely to be incarcerated, they're more likely to be a homeowner. There's like lists on and on and on of the benefits here. And again, the return on investment can be up to $16. It's the highest return on investment when you're looking at where to invest your money. The younger you go, the better the return on investment for the community. So what I'd like to do is pause there, and I'm going to turn it over to Beth Giacalone. I'll have her introduce herself, and she's going to go over the Elevate Pre-K strategy and what has been entailed in the three-year, in the pilot design.
Hi. Welcome, and thank you for letting us join you on such a stressful and important day. I appreciate your time, for sure. So my name is Beth Giacalone. I'm the Assistant Director for Northern Arizona Programs for Candelen, and Elevate has recently become part of my work, and I am just honored to be part of this program. So Elevate Pre-K has three goals, and I don't know if I'll talk quite as quickly as Rebecca, but I'll do my best. She goes very quickly. Three particular goals for Elevate Pre-K. The first is high quality, and just like Rebecca mentioned, high quality has a long-lasting impact, you know, all of those things that Rebecca mentioned, but also medical costs, also prison costs, which we don't need to put any more money in, right? So high quality, and we'll talk about what those components of high quality are in just a moment. The second goal is increased access, not only to pre-K across the city, but also to social resources and services. If a family has more access to social resources and services, then they can be more productive, more productive citizens overall at Flagstaff. The third is sustainability. We really want to make sure that what we're doing and the ideas that we come up with, regardless of whether it's Elevate Pre-K, will end up in, will end up to be able to have all those four-year-olds access quality education, you know, in whatever form it is, and we're working on seeing how that will look. Quality. So when you're talking about quality for early childhood education, one of the things, as Rebecca mentioned, kids are going to several different places a day. And consider, you're going to Head Start for three or four hours in the morning, someone picks you up, maybe a bus, you go to a different childcare, which Head Start is utmost in wonderful quality. Then you go to a different childcare, which may or may not be high-quality, but you're being moved from place to place, right? That's difficult for a young child. It's difficult for me, you know? So we want children to have access full day, year-round, so that they're not also being shipped around during the summer, too. Full day, full year, and this also allows their families to be more productive citizens. They can go to work, they can go back to school, they can re-enter the workforce in a different way than they have been able to before. Secondly, high qualified staff and supports. High quality means that the teachers are well-educated, that they're well-trained in the curriculum and everything else, behavior supports, they're supported by coaches, so they bring that high-quality education to the young children. Third, evidence-based curricula. The curriculum has been studied, that we've chosen, and there are several that are really of high quality, but the curricula has been researched over a lot of years. The one that we have has been more than 50 years researched, and it has been proven that the children who are exposed to this curricula walk out in a much better position than when they walked in, much more ready for kindergarten, much more likely to be successful socially, so when they walk into kindergarten, they're ready to learn. Evaluation and measurement, and we'll talk about that in just a little while, NAU is our partner. We want to make sure that what we're doing makes a difference, right? Doing this and not making a difference for children and families is kind of a moot point, right? Family partnerships. We want to make sure But you're being moved from place to place, right? That's difficult for a young child. It's difficult for me, you know? So we want children to have access full day, year-round, so that they're not also being shipped around during the summer, too. Full day, full year. And this also allows their families to be more productive citizens. They can go to work. They can go back to school. They can re-enter the workforce in a different way than they have been able to before. Secondly, high-qualified staff and supports. High quality means that the teachers are well-educated, that they're well-trained in the curriculum and everything else. Behavior supports. They're supported by coaches. So they bring that high-quality education to the young children. Third, evidence-based curricula. The curriculum has been studied, that we've chosen. And there are several that are really of high quality. But the curricula has been researched over a lot of years. The one that we have has been more than 50 years researched. And it has been proven that the children who are exposed to this curricula walk out in a much better position than when they walked in, much more ready for kindergarten, much more likely to be successful socially. So when they walk into kindergarten, they're ready to learn. Evaluation and measurement, and we'll talk about that in just a little while. NAU is our partner. We want to make sure that what we're doing makes a difference, right? Doing this and not making a difference for children and families is kind of a moot point, right? Family partnerships. We want to make sure that each family that comes into our door has the ability to do their work, that they have the ability to get access to all those supports and resources that they need. All right? And lastly, we want to make sure that the impact, that the collective group of people that have, have, pardon me. My brain just kind of turned off. All the people who have put in, not only funding, but all the hard work, all the effort into this collective impact project that is Elevate Pre-K and Social Peak, which we'll talk about in a second, that everyone gets a say in it and that everyone is making a difference. Okay? The second goal is increased access. As I mentioned before, we want all families to have access to resources and services they need, whether they are a food box, because they can't really afford food for their children, whether it is a, whether it is mental health services, whether it's disability services. You know, all those things that families sometimes need. It's very difficult to access those things. And sometimes, families need multiple resources, multiple services for their children and their family. So one of the things that, one of the goals is that we provide a point of access for families, that they can come to one place and get, and get all the different pieces of information they need to navigate those systems. If you know some of the systems that people have to go through, for example, in the system of disability, being able to get a 504 plan, being able to get an IEP. It's not an easy system, and you have to go through lots of things. So to be able to get someone who can help you through those things and to be able to be pointed in the right direction, this is the person, this is the place, it's much easier for families. They can get what they need. Again, which feeds into that much more productive family, much more productive system in general. So Elevate Pre-K has three portions. Elevate Pre-K Resource Finder is a program that families put in information. They get directed to a family partner, a family, family partner. They are the ones that reach out and find those places. They also place people into Elevate Pre-K. We, we make sure that they fit in that gap that we talk about, and then they're placed there. If not, they're, they're, they are, you know, shown Head Start program. We get to, 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 I apologize. We get to, we, we talk to the Head Start programs. We say, this is a family that's eligible for your programs. If not, we send them to a different childcare that will be the best for them. So in addition to childcare, it's all those other resources and services that we mentioned. And the last piece is the Social Peak Collective. And the Social Peak Collective is where all of those different resources and providers, all of those different people come in together. And they actually work together to be able to be that point of contact for families. And so that, that, that effort in Social Peak will actually provide, will provide people, and families in particular, the ability to have that one point of contact, get everyone they need. And we're looking at software that actually connects everyone as well. So it's a really powerful idea and a powerful goal. So that last piece, sustainability, the idea that all four-year-olds can have access to high-quality preschool, pre-K programs. And I'm going to turn it over to Scott Pettit. And he will talk a little bit more about sustainability for you.
Thank you. Hello, all. So Candelon and NAU and the other partners have been doing a really great job at implementing this pilot. But it's not enough just to increase the amount of seats that are available to citizens of Flagstaff for their four-year-olds. In order for this, in order for Elevate Pre-K to truly shift the trajectory of the future of our community, it needs to be comprehensive. We need to stop looking at it as a service that families with young children are going to benefit from and approach it with the perspective that this is an infrastructure issue. If we can develop equitable access and increase that access to all of the families that serve and provide for our community here, that can really attract and build momentum to bring businesses, to help break the disparity between the amount of money that you can make and how much it costs to live here. And so, one of my jobs, and partnered with United Way of Northern Arizona, is to look beyond this pilot, come up with a sustainable track forward so that all of our community will benefit from this, so that our workforce will benefit from this, so that the infrastructure of this community can attract, on a national level, the type of citizens that we want to live here. The pilot program, when it's done, I'm confident will demonstrate success, that this does create high-quality education for early childhood, for the preschools, get them prepared to go into elementary school. But it also will attract the families that we want to drive our community forward over the coming decades. It's those young, innovative families, those that have just graduated from, with a degree in whatever it is, that can bring that cutting-edge technology, help develop the workforce, help build a robust and thriving economy. And they're going to be attracted here if we have these types of services like Elevate Pre-K that we can provide for them. United Way is going to continue to lead the conversation in a collaborative manner on what would it take to sustain a program like Elevate Pre-K beyond the pilot. It's got to be a collaborative and unifying conversation that involves not just the educators that provide the services, but also the higher education institutions, the businesses that will directly benefit from this, the families and communities and individuals that are going to be engaged directly and indirectly. And I know that the city has invested dollars already, as well as the Wharton Foundation, in providing a study, a feasibility and sustainability study over the coming years to not just a financial sustainability of how can we, as a community, pay for this? But what is the capacity and the sentiment of our community in order to be willing to pay for this? And how are we going to be able to secure and allocate those dollars? And what type, how can we strategically invest those dollars so that we can see an immediate and a long-term return on investment for, for providing for Elevate Pre-K? Whether that be in a direct, real return on investment, like what Rebecca was, was talking about with the expenses that our community already spends, up to 16 times what it costs to put a young person through early childhood education. But also, the intangible return on investments of that potential that our community can create by creating the attractiveness of bringing the types of industry, retaining the types of graduates that want to stay and raise their families here if they could afford to, the types of businesses that will then employ those that we could attract to come back to our city. It's immense, and there's a lot of potential. And so my task through the United Way of Northern Arizona is to lead a conversation around a sustainability study. Hopefully, a report at the end will be able to address all of those issues, figure out what is the sentiment of our community? How are we going to be able to provide for that? And what type of revenue streams are we, as a community, capable of and willing to entertain the ideas of? So. It's really important that the sustainability plan is strategic so that we can leverage the investments in Elevate Pre-K that have already been expended and come up with a way to make this attainable and sustainable moving forward beyond the pilot. All right?
Thank you, Scott.
Hey, everybody. My name's Carolyn Black. I'm an Assistant Professor in Early Childhood Ed at the Northern Arizona University. Prior to obtaining a doctorate, I was a preschool teacher and administrator in New York City, in Brooklyn. So I have field-based experience working with kids and families. And I also have tools in my toolkit that allow me to utilize statistics and qualitative interviews to really understand not just whether our program works. Is it, you know, is it moving the outcomes in the right direction? But how it works and for whom it works best? Just because I want to make this as, you know, interactive and engaged as possible, I'm warning everyone, I used to be a teacher, so I'm going to call on you. So be prepared to put your thinking caps on and help me unpack some of the results I'm going to present to you. So Rebecca, thanks Rebecca, did a beautiful job of outlining the problem. We have a problem in our community. Families are not able to access affordable, high-quality care. Beyond that, we also know that there are inequities in this, right? We know that black children, Native American children, Latinx children, recently immigrated children, low-income families cannot access the same type of care and education as other kids in our community, right? This is an equity issue. We had Beth chat about what's our solution to the problem? Well, we know that high-quality care with appropriately trained staff is going to help us move, move the ball forward. We also know that utilizing evidence-based curriculum is also a great investment in terms of understanding whether our contributions to kids' education are actually making an ideal impact. Scott also mentioned and talked about, how are we going to sustain a program that we perceive, perceive, to be working, right? So problem, solution, sustainability. And my job is to figure out, is it actually working, right? Okay, so, kind of, kind of an important question. So the big thing with preschool is we know that it works, but we also know that communities fail to capitalize on the promise of preschool, right? Rebecca mentioned $1 invested in early care education results in $16 long-term, right? But often, communities don't actually know whether their programs are working. They may do some surveys with families. They may do the percentage of families that access the program, but they are lacking key, critical ingredients about precision. Do they even know what is entailed in their program? Have they, have they, have they categorized and organized and made a list of all the things that they perceive their program to be doing? What is their program doing? Have they measured it? Have they developed a theory of change based on their curriculum that aims to understand not just pre and post? We measure alphabet knowledge before, we measure alphabet knowledge after. But what is the what? What is the how? How is this actually transpiring in the classroom, right? Because without those data points, we bump up against really big problems, right? We may not know why this program's working for a certain group of kids and why it's not working for another. We really have to have a precise theory of change about how all this stuff works. Other critical questions, evaluation frameworks often overlook, are did we reach our target population? Are children and families and teachers satisfied? I can tell you, this is a teacher. If the teachers don't like the curriculum, what do you think? Are they going to implement it to fidelity? Okay, I need some voices here.
No.
No! If the teachers don't buy into it, there's no way in heck that they're going to actually implement it, right? Okay, same with families. If families don't believe in your program, they're not going to attend the program, right? Okay, pretty basic stuff, but we need to measure it, right? The devil's in the details. Teachers, again, they may really believe in the curriculum, but oh my gosh, it's so overwhelming to implement. I don't feel like I have the support to implement it. Are we collecting data on this? Are we collecting data on the extent to which teachers are actually implementing the curriculum as it's supposed to be implemented? Are children engaged? Teachers may love it, families may love it, but do the kids actually like it? Are they enjoying the lessons? You know, these are really important questions. Others include, are outcomes changing the anticipated direction, right? And as a data, as a data-y person and a social scientist, for me, it's not just about before and after. It's about understanding causality, right? Because guess what? Children maturation over time. Even if a child doesn't attend a preschool program, they're going to gain letter and number knowledge and problem-solving skills, regardless of a preschool program, right? How does the program work? What are the mechanisms? What is actually transpiring in the classroom that is going to allow us to say, oh, I, I have very strong confidence that I understand what is driving children's letter and alphabet knowledge? Is it the work, is it the story reading to the small group? Is it large-group activities that engage kinesthetic learning and cross-body engagement? I don't know. We have to measure it. Because if we don't measure it and we aim to serve a different group of children and families, and the program doesn't work, we actually have data to unpack saying, now we can point to our outcomes and really think and identify pieces of the program that may only be serving particular children and families. And again, what about the program works? What is driving those effects? And importantly, how do findings inform future iterations of the program, right? We are continuously building the plane as we're flying it. Thank you, Rebecca. And so we know that we need to continue gaining feedback from children, families, and teachers to make sure that we are adapting and revising our program to respond to the needs of our community, right? We live in a very dynamic society with all sorts of stuff going on. And children and families or teachers are not immune to those things. So I talked about a theory of change. What is, does anyone know what a theory of change is? No? Okay, well, guess what? I'm here to tell you. It is a detailed set of beliefs about what you think your program does, how what it does changes near-term outcomes, and how what it does changes long-term outcomes, and who may benefit most and who may benefit least. Without this set of blueprints, you're lost in a forest. I hate to tell you it, but you don't know what to measure. If you don't know what you think you know your program's doing, you can't measure it, right? Okay, you measure what matters. So I'm going to walk us through Elevate's theory of change. We spent time drafting this document based on what? What do you think we drafted this theory of change on? Let's get a little more, let's get a little more specific. What did we input into our classroom? What, what, what? Curriculum! Bingo! Okay, so we took our curriculum and we studied it and we boiled it down to its essence. And we said, oh, look, this curriculum aims to do this specific thing, responsive interactions between teachers and children. This other curriculum really aims to have active cycles of inquiry-based learning for kids. So those are the things we're going to measure. We have to study the curriculum. Because if we don't know what is entailed in it, we're not going to measure the right stuff. And we could erroneously think, if we measure the wrong stuff, what? That we're succeeding or we're not, right? Okay, so this stuff really matters. So theory of change, based on our curriculum. Our curriculum, or Hyscope, which is an evidence-based curriculum born out of Ypsilanti, Michigan, Perry Preschool Project, established in the '60s. And this is a study everyone cites, the economists, the social scientists that are, that say, for every $1 invested, you get $16 back. Our bullet points are our strategies, right? These are the actions that our program takes that we hypothesize are going to lead to change. I'm not going to go over all of them, but this is based on the curriculum. We studied it, and we studied it. And we said, this is the really, I'm not a meat eater. This is the tofu and potatoes that really is going to drive forward our program. Hyscope is an inquiry, child-based approach to learning that engages children in routines, aims to promote responsive relationships between teachers and children and peers and children, and also promotes a child-centered, open-ended learning environment. So this is our kind of overarching curriculum. PaaS is an acronym for Promoting Alternative Thinking Strategies. We know that in this day and age, kiddos need good emotional, behavioral, psychological regulation, right? We are emotional beings, and often, we overlook that our emotions are things we're not taught about, right? We need core skills like being able to focus and pay attention and not listen to my rumbling stomach as I'm trying to give this presentation. I need to focus on you. Those are all skills you can teach. These are not like, you know, in a black box and magician. You can actually teach these core, higher-order cognitive skills. Anybody, executive functioning, anybody. No. Okay, planning, reflecting, working memory, thinking on your feet. These are all skills that allow you to be successful, not only in school, but in the long term. PaaS helps do this. And we also know that we have to have services that promote families' sense of well-being. And we provided that full-day, family-centered care in order to promote that. Okay, so what does this lead to? What's next in my theory of change? It is the immediate behaviors in the children that we expect to change if we were to implement those curriculum to, to the T, okay? those curriculum to, to the T, okay? So I talked about executive functioning. That didn't come out of nowhere. Which curriculum do you think we base that executive functioning target off of? I'll tell you, it was PaaS, okay? Perspective-taking and emotional knowledge. We actually know that both these curriculum target these core cognitive skills and if children develop these core cognitive skills, it is going to lead to school readiness, right? So here's the what. If we just measured things like pre-reading skills before and after and I said, Miranda, what do you think is driving those effects? And we didn't have our targets, you would say, I don't know. So that's why we have our targets, because it's a breadcrumb that allows us to connect our strategies to our outcomes. We also anticipated that by relieving stress, by providing high-quality care for families, that parenting stress is going to go down, same with anxiety, and that we would increase economic stability. And the distal outcomes, right? This is our pie-in-the-sky goal for Flagstaff, that if we invest in high-quality early care down the road, we are going to see equitable outcomes for third-grade reading scores. Right now, we know that children of color and low-income children have disproportionately lower scores, okay? This is a known fact. We hypothesize that we're going to help reconcile some of these inequities. Okay, so let's, let's walk through some data here. So our first question, these are the little blur, what are they called? The cutouts, the, I'm forgetting. This is one of the first questions that the black box opened up. Are teachers satisfied with Elevate Pre-K? Do teachers implement the curriculum to fidelity? So we use both quantitative and qualitative data because they actually help strengthen each other. If you, if you solely use quantitative data, you're losing the rich nuances and perspectives of the people that are actually engaging with the program. And quantitative data allows us to give, to make generalizabilities. So we're going to go qualitative and quantitative. And the goal here is to see whether these findings corroborate each other or whether they're divergent. HSCOPE, HSCOPE. So we talked to, we talked to teachers, we had them fill out surveys. They told us routines, child engagement, and training. That, they noticed that some of the children had a challenging time engaging in planning and recall. Let's look at the quantitative data. These are indicators and benchmarks of the implementation of HSCOPE, right? This is really focusing on are teachers able to implement this curriculum to fidelity? We see that largely, if you look at fall to spring, that teachers are meeting the benchmark point A and point B are generally increasing their fidelity across time. So we have some mixed findings here for, for HSCOPE. For PaaS, right, our social-emotional curriculum, teachers felt that it was usable, that children were responding to it, that they were engaged, and that teachers felt that this curriculum had a positive impact on, on kids. They were quoted to say, it is both taught as written, but we like to add a bit of extra to add more to excitement. The teachers also mentioned that students were fully involved while doing the turtle to calm down. So we teach them self-regulatory skills. I don't know if anyone ever feels anxious, I do, but there are things like deep breathing that you can do to help you relieve that stress and anxiety. Several, if not all, of the children modeled these actions. So when we look at PaaS here, again, looking at whether teachers were implementing this to fidelity, we see again, large gains across time and that they are as well meeting that benchmark. So we get double pluses for PaaS with, with, with the fidelity. Okay, so let's, let's see what families are saying about the program. So we did qualitative analysis, we used something called interpretive phenomenological analysis, which just means we're really aiming to understand what are the perspectives and lived experiences of families, because we don't get that from quantitative data. One of the biggest themes we picked up from focus groups was a sense of relief. Families said, oh my gosh, I finally have some time for self-care. I finally have time just to take a breath and take a moment to myself. We also know that they were very highly satisfied with the design of the program, mentioning the hours of operation and all the other services that Elevate Pre-K provides. So a direct quote from that is, I appreciate the child is in full, is in full, is in school full-time, it allows me a little more time for self-care. Is anyone a parent on city council? Okay, when you are feeling rested and cooled down and calm, how are you able to parent?
Better.
Better, right?
Halfway decently.
Relationships. So they emphasized, thank you Rebecca and Beth, we invested so much time and effort into developing responsive relationships between our family partner, who's trained in culture-responsive techniques, who's trained in trauma-informed care, because we know low-income families often have more trauma than higher-income families. That these relationships that were built between our family partner and our families and the teacher and the families were bar none, you couldn't put a, you couldn't put a dollar sign to it. They felt relationships with EPK staff were responsive and trusting. They also noticed that they, some of the families noticed that kids were having trouble with problem behaviors in the classroom. So let's, let's unpack this a little bit. Some of this child-peer behavior took her off-guard, but we appreciated the response from staff. I talked about that homeschool partnership. She asked grandpa to do letter and numbers with her at home. And families also mentioned that desire to volunteer and donate supplies. So what I see in this, interpreting findings, is that there may have been some challenges with classroom management and behavioral support. However, teachers had the toolkit and we had a coach that was really able to support kids when they were experiencing challenges in the classroom. Okay, so did we meet our target population? Let's see here. We met, if you look at our first rectangle there, percentage of federal poverty level. We have the light-green 12%, the darker turquoise 29%, the orange 151%, and then the light turquoise. Those are all families who are living at or near poverty level. So a large majority of our families are low-income families or below the poverty level. We also wanted to meet the demographics of our community. It was very important to us that we recruited families that were reflective of the area we were serving, which was Kinzie. So we see that about 20% of children had a second language, either Spanish or Navajo. And we also see that the race and ethnicity of kids and families reflected trends both in low-income populations and as well within our community. We see actually a large proportion of families and children being children and families of color, Latinx, Native American, or Black and African-American. And we also know that these are the kids that are disproportionately more likely to go in special ed, drop out of school, because their needs are not appropriately met by our schools. So retention, who stayed? We got families to come, but the question is, did we, did we get them to stay? 82% of children and families stayed in the program. Approximately 18% left, again, related to peer problem behaviors. We did some analyses and we wanted to understand, were families who left any significantly than families who stayed? Families who left were more likely to be in a divorced or cohabitating relationship. And all children who dropped out identified as white. And for me, as someone who studies inequities in early childhood, we know that on average, children who are Black and Brown are much more likely to be suspended and expelled and leave programs compared to white kids. So this is really good news here. We don't want any kids leaving, but we're not adding to the disproportionality of suspension and expulsion. Okay, so let's unpack child behavioral targets. These are the outcomes that are going to be directly related and linked to our program strategies, the outcomes, I call them the middle domino. So we focused on perspective-taking and emotional knowledge, skills I wish everyone had, but we're going to build them in our kiddos. So let's see, wow, emotional knowledge, we measured this three time points across the year, fall, winter, spring. And does anyone like statistics? No statistics? Okay. Do you, could you tell us, Mayor DC, what an effect size is?
Yeah, it's the amount of, it's the ratio, it's been a while.
That's okay.
The ratio of, well, basically over .4 isn't, isn't it, is very large?
Well, it depends on which effect size. But so effect size is the standardized amount of change, right? From before and after, it's standardized metric, so we can really understand and compare across measures, because different measures use different scales and it's really tricky to understand. This effect size, you're probably referencing Hedges G or Cohen's D.
Yep, Cohen's D.
This is partial omega squared. And anything above a .0, let me say it again, anything above a .06 is large. We're at a .6, not a .06. These were out of left field. These are huge, 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 huge gains, okay? Really, really good stuff. So emotional knowledge, children's understanding of their emotions and their peers' emotions skyrocketed across this, across the school year. Perspective-taking, not as big as the emotional knowledge, but this scale, and I'm not sure if I included it in here, I didn't include the scale in here. This is a large effect size too. So we noticed by collecting data with the kids, that their ability to put theirselves in someone else's perspective and think about, what would my friend feel like if I took her toy away from her? This increased across time. So really, huge gains. And again, if anyone had to take a guess of our curriculum, we had the HSCOPE and the PaaS. Does anyone remember which one targeted social-emotional learning? It was the PaaS. Okay, let's go into child proximal outcomes here, social skills and self-control. We are seeing very small gains, so this is Hedges G. Point one, you're looking for really anything above a .4. Thank you, Mayor DC. So this is probably maturation, right? So kids are gaining some cognitive abilities to understand their emotions and to take perspective, perspectives of others, but in practice, they're kind of not making that leap, which is okay. We need to know this stuff. This is why we do the feasibility study. Okay, we see medium gains, small to medium gains in self-control. And again, same concept here, that kids maybe are learning some of these skills cognitively and it's more difficult to apply them into real world. I don't know about you, but behavior change is hard. Does anyone ever want to try and increase their exercise regime or like change their diet? It's really hard. So it's okay. All right, let's look at some of these letter, pre-reading skills. We see a very large gain, this is Hedges G, and here, anything above a .8 is considered large. We're off the charts again. We're a 1.8. So we see huge gains in letter-word identification from fall into spring. And then as well, in terms of engagement, this is children's ability to sustain interest in a task or learning activity. We see medium gains, very, very good stuff. Anyone know p-values? Okay, can you tell us about our p-values, Paul?
That's like four standard deviations.
It's good.
It's very good.
Right?
Significance is .05 typically.
Typically, that's the threshold.
So .001 is...
It's good.
Yeah.
It's good stuff. Okay, so let's think about our families here who have their kids enrolled. We see parental distress made a, a little decrease. We see anxiety though and stress making big decreases. I will say, this is the squishiest data I have ever presented, so we need to do more follow-up studies. I think the biggest challenge here is the pre-post, we never had the same people fill out the survey, which you always need to do to have a change over time. So asterisk squishy. Okay, questions to families. Over the past six months, did you increase the number of hours you worked per week? 25% said it was likely. So that's a pretty good indicator. Over the past six months, did you increase the number of hours of job training, education, or professional development? 75% said possibly or very likely. So we asked them to reflect. So that is really amazing news. This is telling us indirectly that by enrolling their kids in Elevate Pre-K, they're able to engage more consistently and at higher levels in the economy and workforce and education. So really good stuff there. So this is our theory of change mapped on to our evidence. So we see a lot of green pluses and some green arrows. We also see yellow arrows and some question marks. Guess what? We took this data and we used it to iterate on the current approach to implement, to implementing Elevate Pre-K now. And as someone who loves science and numbers, sometimes the stuff that isn't moving in the right direction is the most informative. Because with the stuff that's not working, if you've measured it and you've talked to folks about it who are implementing the curriculum in the classroom, you can figure out better ways to support the teachers to implement this. So we've taken those lessons learned in order to strengthen our, our curriculum this year. And what is next? Perfect, I think we're going to give it to Rebecca.
Y'all need to like, we do in education, kiss your brain after going through that. I love Dr. Black, she gets excited, I'm like, she knows what she's doing. If she turned around and asked me what a p-value is, I would have been like, I'm not sure. Can you tell me what that is? So anyways, kiss your brains after that. So what's happening next? So as Dr. Black mentioned, we're using the data from year one to continuously improve the pilot. So we heard from our teachers that it was more difficult to implement HSCOPE. This year, we made sure to put in additional training days and supports to make sure that the teachers felt better equipped to come into the classroom and implement those things. There was something else on my shortlist that will come to me at a later time. Anyways, we're iterating, which is what you should do in a pilot program. We're continuing to fundraise for the remainder of the pilot, so we have applied for Kocanino County ARPA dollars. We're waiting for United Way to release an RFP for their city, city of Flagstaff ARPA dollars as well too, and hope to apply for those and be a successful applicant. And then, again, Scott had talked about the steps we're taking to address the need and look down the road to make sure that all four-year-olds in our community have access to high-quality early learning. So we've given you a ton of information, given you a ton of presenters. Thank you for your time. Look forward to hearing any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you Rebecca and everyone. Council, do we have questions? Councilman Ross.
Sure, this might be more a series of comments, meandering comments than anything else. I appreciate the warning that this is going to be an interactive experience. I will provide a warning back to you, I don't think any of us got here by being the shy people in the back of the classroom. So happy to engage with you on that. Really excited to see such an emphasis on data collection and evaluation. You know, I, I spent almost a decade doing nonprofit work in inner-city Sacramento in another life. And the lack of proper evaluation was something that I always saw as a big problem in the nonprofit sector and something that I was very proud of and that our organization was very, very proud of, that we engaged in that. Since you're from the New York area, you may be familiar with Jeffrey Canada and his Harlem Children's Zone work. And we had him out as our keynote speaker for our annual fundraiser one time to teach the entire community of Sacramento about the importance of evaluating what you do so that you can measure success. And for your presentation to be so heavy on how do we evaluate what we're doing and how do we use that knowledge to improve our outcomes and our programming, just really impresses me and it, and just the self-awareness of the need for that is half the battle. And to have the, the professional capacity and training to do it well and to do it right is really important to me and it impresses me very much. I'm wondering Rebecca, if you can go back, it's, it's kind of towards the beginning, it was one of your slides, the why qualities matter slide. I don't know if you can go backwards to that. No, but one, one thing that I'm sure you're all aware of, that I didn't hear talked about a lot in this particular presentation, was something that was really screaming to me, which is the connection between what you guys are doing and our housing crisis here in Flagstaff. So I just want to take a minute to explore that and really connect those dots and encourage you to make that more part of your narrative, especially in this community. You know, not every resident looking for housing in Flagstaff is raising a young family. But with, but with 13% of income going to childcare and, you know, especially considering that families are missing work or changing job status in order to cover for this. When I think of our 8,000 housing, 8,000-unit housing gap for affordability in this town, every time we successfully get a child into one of these programs, we are creating affordable housing opportunities for a family in Flagstaff. And it just strikes me as, as part and parcel, it's, it's, it's very much on the level of, you know, it's, it's horizontal to the aims of our affordable, our affordability stuff. And I, I just encourage you all to explore that dynamic and that connection as much as possible and to promote it and to lift it up and to, and to advertise or, what's the word I'm looking for? Campaign, fundraise on, on those particular connections. I don't know Rebecca, if you're able to speak a little bit more from some of the inside conversations you've all had, recognizing that what you're doing is helping with housing costs, but I give you the opportunity to do that right now, or we could move on to other questions and comments. I just kind of... I just kind of wanted to lift that up.
Yeah. Thanks, Austin. That's really great feedback. I don't think I'm going to be able to add anything super revolutionary to that conversation. What I will say, it, that Scott already highlighted, is we need to think about who we want in our community. And if we want to put ourselves on the trajectory to be a retirement community where only second-home families or second-home couples are residing here or people that do not have to worry about the cost of living in the same way that families particularly do, that this is a way to be able to really look at how we want to shape our community. And this is a way to impact, um, the cost of housing in a way that's frankly, in my eyes, more attainable, right? It's a, it's a, it's still a complex issue, don't get me wrong. But when you're looking at this big picture and this big looming cloud of housing, here is a solution that will offset that, that, that I think really our community should explore.
I think that's a fabulous way to frame it, uh, you know? And the reason that we're so concerned about housing, that we've declared a crisis as a body, is that we are concerned about what our community looks like and how it holds together moving forward. And so those two things are just literally tracking, uh, parallel to each other. Anything we do to successfully get kids into high-quality, uh, pre-K programs is creating affordable housing opportunities in Flagstaff.
Thank you, Austin. I'll say one more thing, Austin, just to your research thing that I, other than, I don't need to, to Dr. Black's horn, of course, you've already figured out she's pretty amazing. But, um, Helios Education Foundation has continued to fund the research and evaluation of Elevate Pre-K, um, to the tune of half a million dollars for the next two years, because they really believe in what's happening in the city of Flagstaff. Um, they are obviously, as we are thoroughly impressed with the way Dr. Black is studying this project. And they're really looking to say, you know, Flagstaff has a fighting chance to really do this and we want to be a part of that. So thank you all.
Councilmember Ross. And then we'll go to Councilwoman McCarthy.
The notebook works. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I share with you and your? May I share with you and your team and all the partners of Elevate Pre-K? Big grateful hearts. Uh, uh, just looking back, you know, like three and a half years ago, a previous council made a mindful decision of funding early childhood education and development for three years for $75,000 that, at, at which United Way has, uh, took on the leadership to, to, to implement. And then we had launch Flagstaff that launched Elevate Pre-K and of course been all the multiple partners. And now with your full year of work, we're breathing life into, uh, this, this comprehensive program for providing access to quality, accessible, um, um, education to our specifically four-years, four-year-olds. Uh, as, as a mom of two adult boys, it's, 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 um, it, it's worth, it's, uh, abundant blessing and, uh, celebrations are, are in order. Um, gosh, so much data I, I didn't expect to, to like, uh, a refresher course. Thanks for that. Thanks, Mayor, for participating. Like, oh, I forgot about that. Um, however, uh, I also kind of, as, as, let me kind of, uh, laser focus on the next steps. Uh, in terms of, uh, and I've mentioned this to, to Rebecca and Scott many, many, multiple times, you know? Wearing my other hat, uh, as, as, um, a board member of the Arizona at War, uh, Cor, Cor, Corinna County War Force Board. For two years now, I've attended the National Conference on Local War Force Boards. And the three major barriers for, for war force going back to work are quality, accessible, affordable childcare, transportation transit, and a war force housing. And, and it's, and it's a national, those are national barriers, not just, not just for Flagstaff, not just the county, it's, it's national. So which brings me to the first suggestion that to, um, in terms of the resource finder, uh, the social collective, perhaps include resources for transit and transportation. And also, um, I'm missing, I'm missing the link to, uh, to involvement and engagement of the business sector. Uh, specifically identifying, you know, we have, we have, um, two major, major, uh, uh, business associations that can, that can mobilize support and mobilize buying and even mobilize investment to keep this program going and even introduce it to perhaps, uh, 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 workplace-based, um, preschool. Uh, all, I also have to know that, thanks for including Quality Connections. I'm on the Board of Quality Connection. And thanks for the partnership with the, the, um, Evergreen Preschool Academy, which is also, um, a job training, uh, a job training component for individuals with disabilities. So just involvement of getting, getting the Chamber Board and the Nala Involved Northern Arizona Leadership Alliance. More of fundraising and friend racing. And then of course, uh, keep that work and, and also engage the, the, our local War Force Board because there, there, there could be dollars there to, to, to tap into as we move to fundraise and friendraise. And then of course, it's all about, it's all about creating that synergy. You know, when, when we, when we come together, when we work together, the, the sum, the sum of the whole, the, the whole is much greater than the, the sum of its parts. So grateful hearts. Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. I do want to let you know that, um, in this past year, uh, Scott and I have been doing our roadshow to present to groups such as the Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce. We've done two presentations with them, including to their Board of Directors. And I know, um, they also wrote a piece that was put in their, um, business publication about the importance of childcare and how that's connected to the workforce. It's been a little while since we've presented to Nala, so we'll circle back around to them. And then we also connected with Econo a while back. I think that's another relationship that we circle back as well to. Uh, I did want to point out too, with the transportation, we are able to provide, um, bus passes to those who are needing transportation access. But I would, you know, I think this is a good opportunity for us to revisit how we better partner and look at that transportation piece as well. So thank you for that recommendation.
Yeah. Councilwoman McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I have a question slash comment. But before I get to that, I would like to preface it with just a, a general, uh, feeling that, uh, based on my life experience, and I'm a grandfather, have raised children and indirectly raised grandchildren. Uh, there's no doubt in my mind that, uh, pre-K education is extremely valuable. And I think, without going through a lot of fancy numbers, I think that's obvious. However, um, now I'll get to my comment question. I also took statistics when I was in grad school. And I remember the statement that correlation is not necessarily causation. And I think you'd all agree with that. I'm getting a thumbs up. So my, not that I say I believe this, but I think for hypothesis for, uh, further investigation might be, is the progress shown over a year's period or so, uh, due to this program? Or is it due to the fact that the children got older? It may be that even if they hadn't gone to this program, that there, the certain skills that are being measured would have improved just because the kids got older. Now, one year doesn't sound like much, but to a four-year-old, one year is 25% of their lifetime. So there's just sort of a, uh, a thought, if we want to do a comprehensive, fair analysis of, of these things. It, it might be good to compare to children that were not in this program or something. I think the scientists, they can think this through very easily. But again, I want to, I want to, uh, stress the fact that I said that my life experience, based on my life experience, there's no doubt that this pre-K education is extremely valuable. I'll leave it at that. Thank you. I guess I do have one other thought and that's like, and, and I did support the city supporting this pilot program. But I also kind of, I'll just question out loud, because over the next three or four years, we'll be talking about this. Whose responsibility is it to do this? I mean, is it the cities? Should this come out of the city's budget? Or should it come out of the school district's budget? There might be some rationality to that. Of course, I also realize that all these budgets are extremely limited, especially the school boards' budgets. And, you know, maybe we need more help from the state and the federal government. Of course, I also realize that that might be unrealistic to expect that kind of help. And it may come down to that even if, as an example, the city doesn't have the prime responsibility, that if nobody else is going to do it, we may have to do it. So again, good program. I'm very supportive of it and, uh, I'll leave it at that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCarthy. Uh, Vice Mayor and then Councilmember Schmody.
Thank you. Thank you for the in-depth presentation. And I do want to thank you, Rebecca. When I got elected, you kind of took me under your wing. You showed me the program. I was able to go visit the classroom at Kinsey. And as a past educator, um, loved what I saw, the holistic approach there and the holistic approach in the program in general. Um, I think you're doing a great job and I just appreciate all of your hard work through the years that I've been, um, following this program. Thanks.
Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmody.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Rebecca, thank you. Beth, Scott, and Carolyn, thank you all for being here on this just any given Tuesday night. Uh, we so appreciate you taking the time. But in all seriousness, this, this was a great presentation and we're so grateful for the work that you all are doing and your committed, committed, committedness, being committed here in, in our community is, is just so important to our, our future. As you talked about, that return on investment and, and, you know, it really is something that we need to embrace as a community and you all are helping to spearhead that and champion that. And to Councilwoman McCarthy's point about the funding, I think we can go down that rabbit hole, but I think we'll end up right back here. But I support us researching and seeing if we can get more money, of course, and where the other partners might exist. But I have a feeling we'll end up right back where we are today in terms of trying to figure out how to move forward. So, uh, I'm grateful for the partnership. I'm grateful for the, the former mayor in council and then the current mayor in council for your support of these programs. A couple of comments, a couple of questions. In regards to increased access, I was wondering, I know parents are already stressed out as it is, especially those that might be, uh, were coming to this in need of support. But I'm wondering if a peer-to-peer type of program might be beneficial to, for parents who want to give back and, and help be a peer support. Um, is that something that is, that you've seen in other models? And is that something you've considered here at all? Whether it's parent, peer-to-peer, or even child, peer-to-peer from a child who's gone through the program?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. So, um, certainly at Cannellin, we're familiar with peer-to-peer models and the benefits, particularly around, um, parents or guardians or anybody who's caring for young children and the benefits of that type of program. We haven't explored it particularly in this model, but I know, um, the county had recently brought it up in one of their chip action plans in regards to that benefits of peer-to-peer. So we might circle back to our partner who does, who has that family lens building community. You're all familiar with Renee Red Day, most likely. Um, so that might be something we put back on her, um, uh, you know, plate to say, hey, is this something we'd like to explore? Cause we do see benefits within there. And for, for, from a family perspective, you can see just decreased stress levels when they have those social connections and that lack of social isolation. So there are benefits on that end.
Totally. I, I think that could be beneficial, but also additional work. Uh, that's great to hear. Uh, grateful that Councilwoman hasn't brought up housing. Totally agree with you. That needs to be part of this conversation, in my opinion. That is a huge stressor for all of us and especially parents and families. I am intrigued by that 6% number that you mentioned early in your presentation. So is my understanding, I'm curious how many folks in our community are not tapping into that benefit that qualify? Do we have any data on that?
That's a great question. So really, we're, we, we can boil the data down to Coconino County. And I can go back and look in First Things First Needs and Assets Report to see if they have that specifically boiled down. Um, obviously I highlighted what was happening in Flagstaff as to why you, what you might see in Flagstaff is a lack of people, you know, being able to participate in DES. But some other factors that typically, you know, fall into that are immigration status, um, pieces that are tied up in legal systems. So whether that be like a joint custody or, um, some sort of legal guardianship, you'll see people not be able to qualify for DES or they're not able to move forward in those steps because there's other pieces they need to have in place before they can go there. Um, and then another piece that is, um, specific to DES, and I call it the chicken or the egg. You need to be working to be able to access, working or going to school to be able to access the childcare subsidy. But if you don't have childcare, you can't get a job. And then if there's not a spot to get, you know, maybe you get a job and then you're like, uh, we, we have people call us. Um, I had one family call us in December and she, or maybe it was first week of January. And she's like, hey, I'm going to Coconino Community College next week and I need childcare. And I'm like, oh, no. Like, so, you know, my team and I are hustling alike. What can we get her connected with? And I don't think, you know, people are ready to take the next step, but you have to have both working at the same time because it's this complex system. So those are some of the typical reasons why we don't see people always engaging in the, um, state childcare assistance.
Gotcha. Okay, great. Just want to make sure there's not money left on the table that we should be taking home.
Yeah. And I think, you know, because of the pandemic, DES also has been looking at that. Like, uh, the federal government has allocated additional dollars for every state, um, through their childcare stabilization grants. And, um, states have had some options as to how to utilize those. So certainly it's an issue that can continue to be brought back up to the state, um, level to say, you know, people aren't accessing these. Let's really examine what's happening here and how we can make it more accessible.
What a, what a concept. That sounds wonderful.
Fun fact.
Uh, I, I really appreciate your, your comments about family, friends, and, and network. Uh, I, I thought that was really interesting and also speaks to how fragile things are and how much we rely on each other. And, and yeah, it's just, it's just, yeah, I guess the situation we're in. Uh, an idea I had, not that you need any more ideas, but, uh,
We want all the ideas, Adam.
Throwing out seeds. Um, you know, what you do, what, what we're doing is so incredible and so powerful and so big that I just wonder if it was, you know, at all possible. And I know my councilmembers, um, uh, my, my fellow councilmembers are going to be surprised by this, but a documentary that follows kids on their journey, talks to parents, interviews them throughout the years, kind of follows them not just through the program, but almost, you know, checks back in with them every few years kind of thing to show that greater impact. You know, and really says, hey, look, you know that story you all love? That person was one of our students and here's their journey in a documentary. Uh, I could just see that really gaining national support, um, and really showing how we're leader. But that I know is, you know.
But I think it's, you're right. I think it's important to be able to tell the story too of what, what does this impact look like long-term? Cause it's easy to be able to look at something and say, well, that was cool. Nice job. And then we move on with our lives. Um, but we know the research shows that there's a long-term impact. And that's part of why Dr. Black has an interest of looking long-term of what happens year after year to those pre-reading skills? What happens to those families? Like, do we see, you know, a substantial change as a result of entering this program? So, you know, I, I do agree.
Awesome. And then, you know, my last comment is very much in line with Councilwoman Ross's comments about workforce and, and that business community. So I'm glad to hear that we are reaching out and engaging with that population in those communities. Uh, I'd add the DBA to your list, Downtown Business Alliance. I don't think you mentioned that in terms of a partner. You know, are you connected with Terry with the DBA?
I don't think we are. So I'd love that connection if you want to.
Any one of us can do that. She's usually here, but, um, you know, we, we can connect you there. But I do think that really gaining the business community behind this and really embodying this. Also, I was grateful to hear that the chamber was speaking positively to the efforts and appreciative of your engagement with them. So, um, those are my comments. I, I really appreciate the presentation. I really appreciate the work. I know we have an uphill battle ahead of us, but I'm just grateful that the city is in. And it sounds like my, my colleagues up here are supportive and, and leadership at the city. in, and it sounds like my colleagues up here are supportive and leadership at the city. So we'll just keep taking this one step at a time, and hopefully, we'll just continue to see positive things grow from this. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. And I did want to just put a recap on the first thing you said and following up on what Jim said, you know, there's this sort of question of like, well, what happens next? Where's the dollars going to come from, right? There's a reason that this is a collective impact project, and it is the thing that keeps me showing up every day, is that it is not just one organization doing this work. It is several organizations who came together and said, hey, this is something we're interested in, we want to do. So when we start to pursue solutions on what are our next steps, it's got to be a collective impact model. We have to have multiple people at the table contributing so that one entity, or, you know, the person who happens to be in power at the time says, oh, well, this is the way we should do it. It has to be done as a collaborative effort, and I think that's the way that we're going to find consensus and find success.
Thank you. Councilman McCarthy?
I got a couple of points to pick up on other council members' points. The first point I'll make is that when you communicate with people, it shouldn't be done in the way that you're comfortable. It should be done in the way that the recipient is comfortable. Now, this presentation was perfect for council because we're all technical people, college-educated, blah, blah, blah. It was very appropriate. But to Adam's point, if you're going out to the community at large to get support, something like a video would be extremely valuable, and it's going to have less of, you're not going to ask them what a P factor is, which I don't even remember. I do remember-
P value.
There's no follow-up question, so we're good.
But my only point is that, you know, that was okay for here. But something that just gets down to the visceral, common sense video, I think this is excellent. And it may be to take that, to make that video, it takes four or five years. But you need to start taking some of that video now and put it in storage so that three, four years from now, you can bring it out. So, Adam, right on. My other point is to compliment my colleague to my left here, Mr. Asland. And I had never thought about this as a housing issue, but I think his point is extremely well-taken. And I think that's something that I ask the other council members to keep in mind as we move forward for this discussion, housing discussion, and everything. Again, I'll leave it at that, but I may come back.
Thank you. I will note that you did take a great video for the annual event. I recall of the kids and the teachers and everyone. So I would say that they're on point, making those kinds of things happen.
I was on the fence about bringing the video here today, so. Point taken, Jim.
I like the effect sizes and Cohen's D and all that stuff, so. Well, I won't labor too much. I could talk all day about how amazing your program is and how much I've enjoyed learning about it. I will say, though, to Councilmember McCarthy's point, that it was good that you have this slide up here, and it shows why this is a collaborative effort and why the city should be involved. When we're talking labor force earnings, when we're talking decrease in poverty, decrease in crime, decrease in maybe housing subsidies, or whatever it may be, that this does affect all jurisdictions. And therefore, I'm very glad for the collaborative efforts being made, and we certainly need to keep this in the back of our mind during our budget discussions, as well as when we talk about our legislative priorities for lobbying with the state. Setting up a program, for example, where, hey, state ledge, if the city's ponying up certain dollars, will you match them? We're not going to say, just give us money, but can we work on a matching program, for example? So anyways, just a good thing to keep in our mind. I would like to continue to support these amazing efforts and help in the collaborative work to making sure we can create that sustainability that's going to be reported on how to do. So with that, thank you.
Thank you all. And thank you for your support, again. Appreciate it.
Really. All right. All right. With that, we are on to Agenda Item 8, our City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Apologies that this came to you just before this meeting, but it is in your email, City Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. I'm wondering if we can maybe put it up on the screen, and we'll walk through it quickly. The report is appended by three monthly reports, and I want to allow enough time for our division heads to speak to those monthly reports. That will include capital project, in no specific order, capital projects, water services, and sustainability. While we're queuing this up, I would like to go off-script and do an introduction, if I may. We made note in my, in a report a few weeks back about some new members joining our leadership team, and we have two of them with us now. They may be in the room. I would invite both those gentlemen to come down. We'll be hearing from, we have Randy Tracy with Human Resources, and now we have Paul Mood, the new city engineer. Would like to have them come down and maybe introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about their background and how happy they are to be here in Flagstaff. I know both these gentlemen are getting situated, getting their housing in order, and all the things that go along with making a move. We are so grateful that they have joined the team. We'll start with Paul Mood, our new city engineer.
Thank you, Greg. My name's Paul Mood. I'm the new city engineer. This is my second day on the job. Have approximately six years of private sector experience and 19 years of public sector experience in the valley with the towns of Gilbert, Fountain Hills, and Paradise Valley. And what I told my staff is this is my first job with a real city. Everything else has been with a town. I grew up in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, so I'm familiar with the cold and snow. Have a wife and a young five-year-old son, and we like to ski. We come up to Flagstaff about five times a year skiing, so just starting to look for a house and happy to be here and enjoy the winter. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks, Paul. We're happy that you are here. And then Randy Tracy, who is now our new leader, Director in the Human Resource and Risk Management Division. Randy, greetings.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, and all of the council members, leadership team, and everybody that's watching, hello. My name's Randy Tracy. I'm the new HR and Risk Management Director. So nice to meet all of you. I've met a few of you, and I look forward to meeting the rest of you. Been a wonderful transition here. I came from Pinell County for the last seven years with their Human Resources Department. Thirteen years in corrections, which we had a decentralized HR model, so I had staff of eight that handled all of our HR matters internally. And then before that, I was in the funeral and cemetery business for nine years. I joke with people, if you ever need a casket, you let me know. Nobody ever takes me up on it. But it's been a wonderful transition. Been here for a week. This is my seventh day, just getting up to speed to a lot of stuff. One of the things that I saw very quickly was all the tremendous work that this body, leadership, and staff have done on their compensation plans. Amazing work. And hopefully, you know, one of the philosophies I have is to always respect the work that's been done, and then try to build on that and take it to the next level. So hopefully, we can do that. I was attracted to come up here. Been in here 23 years in Arizona. I was getting a little tired of the heat. Came up, and you guys gave me a snowstorm on about day two, so thank you for that. I appreciate it. Nice introduction to Flag. Luckily, I come from snow country in the past, so it's been fun. Thank you guys so much. So happy to be here and look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Randy. And I will just say that the two of you coming in is 100 pounds of weight off the shoulders of our, of our leadership team, and everyone I hear has been so excited for you to be joining us and looking forward to seeing you more at the DIAS and working with you all. So, thank you.
Well said, Mayor. Thank you. And thank you, gentlemen, for allowing me to put you on the spot here. Be prepared, it won't be the last time you'll be in front of council. Happens with regularity.
Bum, bum, bum.
Moving on, and thank you, Stacy, for putting this up. I will try to avoid quick scroll-throughs. It's actually a pretty abbreviated report. I would like to start here. We attended a wonderful and very well-attended graduation ceremony on Friday of last week. Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, for your attendance. I think Councilmember Salas, you were there also. It's wonderful to see such a great turnout. There were a lot of families and friends in the audience. Why am I mentioning this? It was a badge pinning that recognized 10 new firefighters. This is huge. I'm staying with the theme of recruitment here, which is a drum we can't beat loud enough these days. 10 new firefighters, and one of them, Steve Drennan, will be with Summit. The other nine will be serving our fire department. We're so happy. It's a great-looking group. They were wonderful to watch and listen to. There were awards given. There was a nice comment by our chief and deputy chief, and it was just a great event all the way around. So I'm going to rattle through the names. Firefighter Steve Drennan, firefighter Blake Armstrong, firefighter Tanner Caputo, you might recognize the last name, firefighter Brianna Dodzinski, firefighter Corey Fisher, firefighter Kelsey Fortnum, firefighter Jake McQuade, firefighter Riley Miller, firefighter Justin Perez, and firefighter Alex Taylor. Welcome to the Flagstaff Fire Department. Can't wait to see these folks in action. They are well-trained and ready to go. So there are some nice photos on the page that follows, and you can enjoy that. And again, my apologies for getting this City Managers' Report to you a little bit late in the game. Continuing on, props to the firefighting department, firefighters, for helping out the High Country Humane Society with some donated staff time and work. Much appreciated. Scrolling down, I want to single out one rather heroic event, an amazing rescue attempt, successful. A group of individuals were stuck at the Grand Canyon cavers when the elevator malfunctioned 21 stories below the ground surface. The rescue team was able to create a lift system with multiple ropes and technical rescue equipment. Each member of the stranded party was placed in a harness and lifted back to safety on the surface. Way to go. Moving on, I'm going down to the police department on the next page. End staying with this wonderful theme of recruitment. We have five new recruits beginning the High Country Training Academy here in Flagstaff. This is great. A number of us toured that facility not that long ago. This is a great partnership between the city, the county, and Coconino Community College. By the way, I was there yesterday to meet the incoming president. Can't wait to introduce him to you, council. I think that will be occurring likely in January after the holidays. Stay tuned for that. So we're excited to see these graduates in February come from the High Country Training Academy. Good stuff. Also, Chief Musselman was invited to pass out finisher medals last weekend at the Flagstaff Marathon, which benefited Coconino Community College. The event was sold out with over 400 runners. Took place at the Flagstaff Nordic Center. Lastly, and then we'll invite our directors to come up and present their monthly reports to you. With respect to Public Works, I want to put an exclamation point on something that's been talked about a lot of late. It's a fast-moving project, and it is now finished. That's the Schultz Creek Detention Basins finalized in just 42 working days. Congratulations to Adam Mealy, Public Works Senior Project Manager. I think the world of Adam. He knocked it out of the park for us at the airport parking lot facility and had his hands on the DORPA project last summer. Great go-to guy with the Public Works team. Congratulations, Adam, and to the team who was involved in this wonderful project. Public Works and PROS attended a couple of Downtown Business Alliance meetings to seek feedback about new possible tree wells and streetscape pilot projects. I attended one of those presentations. It was very well orchestrated, exciting stuff. Why are we doing this, PROS? And YOLO is taking this on, along with Public Works, simply in a proactive manner because some of our streetscape in the downtown area is aging, and there will be needed improvements over time. Stay tuned on this. I think it'll likely, you know, start off with a pilot project, and, you know, we'll gauge the success of that and probably see some sort of incremental program through the years as we start replacing tree wells, trees, and stretches of sidewalk. So very important, and good work to Public Works and PROS. Finally, Evan Tyrell joined Team Flagstaff as the new Solid Waste and Fleet Section Director. We welcome Evan. A reminder, I'll be out of the office coming up at the end of November. And with that, I will conclude my report and ask, we'll start with Lisa Deam, who's in the audience behind me, to maybe come up and give you a nice update as to everything going on with Water Services Division. Thanks, Lisa.
I'm Lisa Deam with Water Services. Recruitments, we're very, very happy to see that we finally have onboard a new Division Director coming to take the helm at Water Services. It's been a long time coming, and all of staff is preparing to help him and already taking steps to get him acclimated to what our needs and our processes are here in water. With that, we also had a retirement. We had to bid farewell to Steve Camp, our Regulatory Compliance Manager. He was with us for nearly seven years. He retired on November 3rd. He had over 30 years of public service experience. He came over to the city from ADEQ. He brought skills to the city at a time that we really needed his skills. We were having compliance issues, and he really helped to structure a very high-quality program that we're still using today. So we thank him for that. His humor, his car talk in the halls is, will be missed, and you'll probably still see him on the roads in Flagstaff in Phoenix. So we just wanted to make a note and about his retirement. I'm going to move up to talk a little bit about our unsung heroes. And I believe we have Patrick O'Connor, our water distribution and interim distribution pipe director, that we, and would like to talk about some of the work that our crews do, not just eight, nine to five. They're on-call 24 hours a day. And in October, the water distribution crews were called not once, but three times at night, in the middle of the night. The first one came on October 10th at 8:30 in the evening for a water main break on Silver Spruce Avenue. There was two breaks and a six-inch cast iron line, an old line that needs replacement. Again, a good argument toward our aging infrastructure program. And they went, they jumped on it, did the repair work, and had it fixed by early the next morning, by the time people were getting up and going to work in the morning. These are the unsung heroes. We turn on the tap, we don't even think about it, but these people really spend a lot of time and go the extra, extra mile to make sure to, that your water is not only reliable, but it's high-quality. Three days, two days later, on October 14th, at 2:30 in the morning, there was another break on the same water main. The on-call operator, it was a third break. This is a picture of that break on Monday night. They turned off the water at 7:00 a.m. They had service restored by 1 o'clock in the afternoon. This is an above and beyond- This is an above and beyond, again nineteen-sixty-two and cast iron pipe that is slated for replacement. We did receive a call from a resident complimenting our crews, saying they couldn't believe how fast they responded and got water turned back on. There was also a ten-inch cast iron, a main break on Butler, and a four-inch break on Sunset. So this is, this is the stuff that these, these crews and these people do on a daily basis that we don't necessarily always talk about or know about, but we would like you to be aware of, and the great work that, that Patrick does. Not only does Patrick oversee the water distribution pipes, he also oversees the water reclamation, the sewer pipes that come back, the reclaimed water going back out into our system, and he also oversees the stormwater crews that are out doing the work. So kudos to Patrick. If you're there, Patrick, you want to turn your camera on for us, and we can all say thank you.
Yes, thank you, Lisa. I appreciate that. We all do.
And while, while they're doing that, they're still making sure that the construction projects are moving forward, that the fire hydrants are being inspected. Since our team has taken over the hydrant inspections, it's really made a huge amount of difference in the quality of the work that they've done. I'm going to move over to water production. The same thing. Our crews, when we turn on the tap or we have water, we don't really think about it. But we had three groundwater wells go down. Now, this doesn't sound like much, but in 2021, if you look at our annual report, only thirteen percent of our water came out of Lake Mary. Zero percent came out of Inter Basin. That takes a huge demand out of our groundwater. And when these big wells that are our producers go down, then somebody has to make decisions on how to make sure that there's sufficient potable water supply for the community. And our water production staff with Brian Hunsinger at the helm do take care of that. This is a picture. It is not small feat to pull a pump out of the ground when it's fifteen-hundred feet below the surface and to have them repaired and redone. This particular pump had not seen light for, I want to say thirty years, but I might be off on that. But it was a long time. They also take the time, we're still working our sedimentation basin project that will be coming before council for the construction phase. It will be going out to bid. And we're meeting, they're meeting with the ADEM FEMA people on the Inter Basin Pipeline. That pipeline is broken. The water line is not accessible, and it's going to be a very long and arduous trek with partner agencies to bring this back online and get that other water source, that critical water source, back into our water portfolio. There was an investigation in the Upper Lake Mary Dam. That came out, actually, there was no crack. They thought, ADQ thought there was a crack. There was not. So we were very happy to see that. And here's a picture of one of our staff, Danny Hickey in the backhoe, with the geotech firm that was doing the investigations. You've been hearing a lot about water reclamation. We have a ballot measure today, fingers crossed. We all have that. We've been working, spending a lot of time and a lot of work and effort to bring this to fruition, to really do some good work in reclamation for the city. They're working on trenching and for fiber projects. More fiber, better connectivity really, really helps all of our site, all of our, our facilities. And those are some of our objectives. We have our Neresco Report, that sustainability contractor that we will be partnering with to maximize our energy efficiency projects that we can do with this partner. Anoxic mixers, it sounds kind of ominous, doesn't it? But we need them. And we, they are, have selected a vendor, and will be moving those projects forth at both Wildcat and Rio de Flag. I think that's correct. Where also, we had an opportunity to purchase an odor control unit. Again, that sounds like a kind of an ominous piece of equipment, but it's very important. And this one is, came at a discount because someone else, another entity couldn't use it, so we're going to get a little bit of a price break on that. So we were able to move within our procurement process fairly quickly to be able to make this happen. We're very happy with that. Stormwater, you hear about that so much. I won't beleaguer it. Basins, we're happy for basins. We're bringing to you next week, we will be talking more about our, the rate assessment and rate study to be able to take care of all of those basins. That's a huge part of our plan, to be not reactive, but to actively manage the new landscape that we're seeing that's coming through Flagstaff during our summer seasonal rains. You'll be, you'll be deciding on the stormwater credit manual, doing the second read. That will be next week because we were already there last week, or, and Francis Short Pond's getting a new bathymetric survey. Again, this, this is maintenance. This is the important maintenance that we do behind the scenes all the time. Pictures make a difference there, and some of these alubial fans that are going to help distribute water when the flows well, our forest heals. The last thing I'd like to touch on, and you will be hearing more about this, is our testing. ADEQ came and sampled our effluent for forever chemicals, PFOS and PFOS. There was none in our water supply. It was a non-detect. That's a very, that's a happy story for us. They have to come back and retest our biosolids, but, so we're looking to finish that story and finish that loop and see what needs to be done and how we can best manage these forever chemicals that are, that are coming into our supplies and into our effluent. And our specialists in water conservation and communications actually partnered every year, twice a year. We take NAU Sustainability One Eight One classes for field trips to learn about our water sources. So we just completed one of those. Do I have any questions?
Any questions, council? Councilmember Schmody.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation and all the great updates and work that the team is doing. That's just wonderful to learn about. Curious about that, that, that report you just mentioned about the chemicals. To me, that means that we're not testing thoroughly enough, because I assume they're there regardless of whether or not they come back. Am I wrong in that thoughts, or what are your thoughts?
Well, what they, what, what ADEQ tested, they tested our wells. So they tested, I think, like seven different wells, different locations, and there was non-detect of PFOS and PFOS in those wells. Of course, these are fifteen hundred, really good quality water supply. They did find in some of the water, they need to go back and test the biosolids, but in the effluent water, they did, there, it did show up, it did test in, in our effluent, in our wastewater, the raw wastewater. However, we were well below the mean, the mean and the norms. We want to wait until we come, they come back with the biosolids test, and then we can give you accurate information, because there was some anomalies in their test. So is it, is it here and probably touching us in our wastewater? Probably. And then we have to decide, once we have the data and we have good data, then we can decide how to best manage that data. How, how to best manage it in the best course of action. And I'm sure that we will be bringing that to you in our reclaim plan, the reclaim master plan, and how to best manage it, and what exactly do we need and what's best for our community. Did that answer your question?
It did. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Do I have any other question?
I'm not seeing any this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Always very informative. Really appreciate having you here. And we also have Trevor with us, with our capital projects team, and I'll ask him to come on up and walk you through, and then we'll finish up with a presentation by Nicole Antonopoulos on sustainability. That will be virtual. But Trevor, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, City Manager Clifton. Good afternoon, Your Honor, members of council. I am Trevor Henry. I am the Capital Improvements Engineer, and I will provide an update on the capital report, the projects. And on the screen right now is our map for October. And to go through this real quick, we have pre-construction projects represented by a blue dot. We also have projects that are under construction represented by a yellow diamond. So what I'm going to do is just touch a little bit on some projects that are in the report, give a quick, brief update, and then at the end, if there are questions, we can go through them in the comments, we'll, we'll address them. So the first project is the Boulder Point University Avenue Traffic Calming. So this project is going to take place in Boulder Point. It is traffic calming measures that have been through the Transportation Commission, and the design consultant has been selected to deliver these traffic calming measures. And this firm is Woodson Engineering, and they're from here, from Flagstaff. Staff is currently working on the final proposal, so we're going to anticipate something happening pretty quick, and then we will start in the design and get that project going. So the next project is the Fremont Boulevard Restriping. So if council remembers the last time we went through the report for capital, we had some public comments about this project. And so the update that we have for you this afternoon is staff is going to take this project back to the Traffic Commission to have a discussion and then address some of those comments that were made. And we are anticipating being in front of the Transportation Commission on December seventh. The next project is the John Wesley Powell Specific Plan Study. If the council remembers, we were before you in the first part of the spring and then possibly around the early part of summer. We talked about the original alignment, and we talked about an alternative alignment. Council gave direction on the, on the alternative alignment. So staff began working on that with our consultant, going through the specifics, the logistics of how that was going to work. We did talk, there are some additional work items, scope, that we do need to address that are outside of the contract. So what staff is doing currently is working with the consultant on a change order. So this is work that is above and beyond what is currently contracted. And what we plan to do is be in front of the change order committee, possibly in December, once we get everything committed, get approval there, and then that item will be before you for your consideration for approval. And we are targeting January seventeenth. I believe that is the third Tuesday in January for your consideration and approval. The next project is the Downtown Mile. So if council remembers, in early September, we were approved or awarded the grant through the INFRA. It was a notice of opportunity, a federal notice of, of federal opportunities, I believe, is the grant. And that was approved, and so staff has been working forward on the Downtown Mile, has been moving that project along. Earlier in October, the award was made to the design consultant, but the update that we have for you this, this afternoon is an IGA with Metro Plan was before you on October eighteenth. It was considered and approved by council, and that IGA would execute four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars to be received by the city for planning efforts and the design. So that was a win for the project there. Also, on October twenty-seventh, city staff met with BNSF and Amtrak to work through the development of a CHRISI grant. This CHRISI grant would be between the city and BNSF for additional funds for rail improvements and for Amtrak improvements at the Flagstaff Station. The next project I wanted to talk about is the Rio de Flag. Everybody knows about the Rio de Flag. That project is moving forward. We're, we're gaining momentum. We're, we are, partners are the Army Corps of Engineers, BNSF, ADOT, and, and another huge amount of partners that we're working with. The update that we have for you this afternoon is on October twenty-eighth, Justin Gay. He is the new Deputy District Engineer of the United States Army Corps of Engineers, the LA District. He was in town with Colonel Bolton. They were here to visit the project, get boots on the ground, and this was Deputy Gay's first time here in Flagstaff. And Mayor Deasy, Councilmember McCarthy, and Councilmember Solis were there in attendance, as well as other staff from both the Army Corps and the city. It was a great visit, just talking about the project in general, continuing the partnership and the commitment to move this project forward. We did talk about milestones to the project that we need to, to meet and get there in order for us to deliver. So that was a great discussion. Also, staff continues to work with our partners on agreements related to the project in order to move them forward. So there is a lot of coordination still going on. Also, another small update is we continue to work on the design. Whatever that design is, we're, we're talking weekly. We're talking, if not other, every other day on, on items related to the design. So we're, we're committed to moving this project forward. The next project I wanted to kind of give a brief update on is the Lone Tree Overpass. We just received sixty percent design documents, and those were submitted to the city, to ADOT, to Mountain Line, and to the Army Corps of Engineers. So we're all, all these agencies are reviewing, giving comments. We expect to have something back soon, shortly, so that we can just continue that design to get to final completion. Also, staff has been working with the Beautification Public Arts Commission, as well as a public art focus group on the development of aesthetics and public art components related to the bridge improvements. So staff is working hard to figure out what the bridge is going to look like and just partnering with, with these commissions to ensure that this bridge is reflecting what the community is looking for and what our commissions are looking for. The next project to highlight is the protected intersections at Butler and Beaver and Butler and San Francisco. So if the council remembers, in the spring of this year, we talked about a few projects that we wanted to further investigate, possibly do fifteen percent design efforts, and then also doing maybe a feasibility study. So of those, that package, these two came out, and the update that we have for you this afternoon is we have worked with a consultant firm, WSP Global Incorporated. They are part of the city's procurement on-call program, and they have been selected, and they are going to deliver the fifteen percent design as well as a feasibility study. They are also going to look and explore any grant opportunities for us. We are, there is a kickoff meeting scheduled for next, actually for tomorrow, and we will just continue to work forward on, on these two projects. The last project related to, to capital is a new project. It's a water services project, kind of going in line with what Lisa Deam had reported out earlier. So this is the Solier Avenue Transmission Main Project. So this is a, a twelve-inch water main that will be installed in Solier Avenue from Elk Run Street to Forest Street. And this project is necessary. It is a, a secondary supply for water to help the new developments that are occurring there on Butler Avenue. So this is very important. So this is new to our report. We will continue to bring updates on this in, in future reports as we get to council. So the update that we have is design documents are anticipated to be complete at the end of this month, and we're anticipating construction to start this coming spring and then be finished in 2023. So at the end of the calendar year of next year is what we're anticipating. So one of the other items that we've done with this report is we decided as staff to also bring forward other projects, other items that we're working on in city engineering. This report also includes work that is happening with development engineering. So what we're calling private development projects, so these are projects that are currently working through DE, so that's development engineering. So that process includes or comprises of commercial site plans, retail site plans, or subdivisions going through the city review process. And they are adhering or making sure these projects adhere to city of Flagstaff engineering stand. standards, as well as zoning code entitlements. Some of the work that they're working on right now in development engineering on these private development projects are the Northern Arizona Healthcare, the new campus, also work at Timber Sky Subdivisions, also the Canyon Del Rio Subdivision, and Juniper Point Subdivision. So these are projects that we wanted to highlight in this month. So for those projects, they're either in project review, or in construction, or awaiting permits. So projects that we have in civil plan review are four subdivisions and 10 site plans. Projects that are under construction or awaiting permits to be issued, we have 10 subdivisions and 31 site plans. So there's a lot of work occurring in development engineering and moving forward. One of the projects we did want to highlight is the Juniper Point Phase 1. So that project is nearing completion for its public infrastructure, and the last major work item that we have identified is the relocation of a 27-inch water transmission main, and that's necessary to put in the new sewer infrastructure for the connection of the entire subdivision. So that's one of the last many items that is needed. So the balance of all of that work for Juniper Point Phase 1 should be completed by the end of this month. And just real quick, for Phase 1, we are looking at 38 single-family lots, which building permits are anticipated to be approved and issued in this month for November. And then next additional phases of Juniper Point will be coming forward and going through the process. And as we get there, we will provide updates and information for the council. So that concludes my part of the update, and if there's comments, questions, gladly take them.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you. I had a question regarding the traffic calming in Boulder Point. I'll ask the question, then I'll tell you why I'm asking the question. Will that come before either council or go back after the final design is established? Will that go back to the Transportation Commission? And the reason is that I've looked into, they had some questions about it, and the answer I basically got is, well, we won't know until we have the final design. And my concern is that the way it's laid out now is the bike lanes just disappear. So if a bicycle is going there, it's like they either have to take the lane, or they have to jump on the sidewalk, and it's a little bit problematic. So my question is, will it come back to Transportation Comm. or to City Council? Thank you.
Your Honor, Councilmember McCarthy. So my understanding for this project, it spawned from Traffic Commission, staff was given direction on what needed to be part of the traffic calming measures. So staff went out and provided, looked for proposals from the on-call consultants and firms. We came up with a proposal, and that's what we are moving forward on, which is based upon what the Traffic Commission provided for us initially. So maybe to answer your question, staff believed we had enough information to move it forward to meet what they required. However, if the council feels we need to go back to Traffic Commission, we can do that. If we need to come before you with a presentation on what the Boulder Point University Traffic Calming Measure Project is, and give you an update, staff is willing to do that.
Follow-up. So the way it's defined right now, it's not defined. I mean, we know what the temporary provisions are, but we don't know what the permanent is, and we don't know if they'll have an impact on the bicycle lanes or not. Therefore, I, just as one person, would ask that it come back, at the very least, to the Transportation Commission with a final proposal, because right now it's kind of nebulous. Thank you.
Your Honor, Councilmember McCarthy, if that is the council's direction, we can do that. Staff can get to a certain level within the design and go back to the Traffic Commission and get endorsement, and then move forward.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, sir. I would be supportive of that, simply because I know Councilmember McCarthy lives in the neighborhood, and he's got his ear close to the ground on this one, and I would follow your lead on it, be happy to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Aslan.
I'm just one other voice, though, so.
Well, I think I see Councilmember Shimoney's hand up, so I'm guessing what he's going to say.
I don't think it needs to come back. No, I'm just kidding. You know, Trevor, thank you. Good evening, good afternoon. Jeremy, team. Mr. Mood, welcome, is in the house. So glad you're here, grateful that you and the family made the move up here to Flagstaff, and hope you're enjoying the cooler weather in our upcoming winter. But really, really appreciate the presentation. So I think, Councilmember McCarthy, what you're talking to at the root level, at the policy level, is the rift or the struggle between our code and our shifting priorities that the council is putting policy behind. The code is going to take a couple of years to implement, and the team is working on that, and we'll need to dive into that tonight. But until it's implemented, staff is simply following code, and at times, that isn't necessarily putting our priorities in place in our projects. So I do support this coming back before council, because too often, our cyclists and pedestrians left out or placed last in that priority list. And I think council wants to make sure that we're ensuring that that doesn't occur. And hopefully, once the code reflects that, staff through the design work will better reflect that, too. But I like to trust that staff knows that at this point, but at the same time, I do support it coming before council if there is a desire for that. So just wanted to weigh in on that topic and share my insight about priorities versus code. Trevor, you spoke to the Fremont Design Project, and that's another good example of this discussion, and a coming before the Transportation Commission on the 7th. Is that, I know we talked about this in the past, I'd like for that to also come before council, perhaps on the same agenda or just back-to-back, just to, you know, make it more efficient of a conversation. But just wanted to see if you had any comments about that coming back before council as well?
Your Honor, Councilmember Shimoney, staff was not planning to bring that before council. The plan was to go to Traffic Commission on December 7th and address the concerns, the comments, have a discussion. If, again, if council's direction is to bring those two back, Traffic Commission first and then City Council, then staff would be happy to do that.
Not to seem like, Transportation Commission, right?
Correct. What did I say?
Traffic. Close. Feels like Traffic Commission, but no, I'm just messing. I will be in attendance, as I know Councilmember McCarthy will be, at that Transportation Commission, and maybe if we feel like certain priorities aren't being met, then we can elevate it. But I like to think that it can be left to the commission as well, and to staff, so we'll play that one by ear. Trevor, any updates on the Beulah funding analysis? I know that the team's been working on that, and I saw that there's plans to break around spring 2023, but we haven't necessarily gotten updates on what the cost is looking to be, and if we're within budget, or where we're at.
Your Honor, Councilmember Shimoney, as far as Beulah University, if council remembers, we were going to come before you in May with the first GMP, and then we were going to come before you again with a second GMP. At that time, we did, we had a discussion about the budget, we had a discussion of cost increasing, what we were going up against. We were able to get appropriations in the fiscal year 23 budget, and at the time when we had the discussion, we talked about going through some value engineering workshops, going through some ideas to bring down the cost. We also had some real estate, some property acquisitions that we needed to work through and get in a better position. So we are currently working and finalizing the value engineering workshops. We anticipate to have some final numbers, possibly in a few weeks, maybe right before Thanksgiving or right after Thanksgiving. Our plan is to come before you on December 6th with the GMP. So there will be one GMP, and that will outline what we are going to do, what we are going to pay for this project to be completed. And right now, preliminary numbers look like we are going to be approximately maybe 1.2 million less than where we were. But again, that's, we're still trying to finalize where we are with that value engineering workshop. But we are exploring cost savings, we are exploring ideas to not reduce scope, but just change on how the work is laid out, and maybe even sequencing. So there are some plans to do that. We are planning to complete the real estate, the property acquisitions in early 2023, and all of that's going to work together, and all of that will be laid out on December 6th when we come before you, on how that's all going to work. And again, that's going to be one GMP, guaranteed maximum price, for the project, for council's consideration and approval.
I appreciate that, Trevor. And I understand inflation is a real thing, and our costs are going up. But council, if you recall, I think this was a $10 million project that was sold to us at that price, and it's coming in nearly double. And Trevor, if you recall, I remember when we debated this before summer break, you said it was going to be a lot closer to that $9 million or $10 million than the latter. But regardless, I remember, you know, C. Andrew and I talking about, at what point does a project get reevaluated by council of whether or not it's worth that additional funding, since it's so much more? But without going into that and starting a whole conversation, it is a two-lane roundabout really close to campus. I have a lot of concerns, but I think that ship has sailed. I do have concerns about how much overpriced it is, but I think it is what it is at this point. I was hoping that you were going to be right, that it was going to come in lower, but maybe a CCR, when you do have more information, would be helpful for council. And then, anything you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Shimoney, I do remember that discussion well, because we did talk about the budget, we did talk about how things are increasing. Everything is going up, inflation and supply chain demand issues, we're having delays. If we wanted to order materials now, it's possibly going to be a year out. Ductile iron pipe, storm drain pipe, anything related to construction. Oil and asphalt is increasing, cement and concrete is increasing, it's getting scarce. It's just delays, and we're just not able to get it. So I remember that conversation well, and I did say that the initial budget, when the project started, was near $9 to $10 million. When we did come before you, we explained that costs were going up, we had a $12 million, $12 million budget. We also had a $16 million budget for what the estimate was based on from our C-MAR. We talked about it being closer to $19 million, and that's where we stopped and said, let's have a break, let's work on these value engineering ideas, go through that process, let's see where we can have some cost savings. At the same time, the current fiscal year budget is $21.9 million. So we are just above the last reported estimate, and if the numbers are correct, we are closer to a higher level, we are closer to 18, the higher 18 million number, so maybe 18-point whatever number.
Yeah, we are getting a bit off track here with this conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to catch your attention, indicate that city managers' report and ancillary reports to it are informational only. I think we're getting far into the weeds.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm done with my comments. I do find that to be informational, and I appreciate that information, so thank you for that. And yeah, I guess I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to circle back, because I think we were still seeking direction on the, was it the Boulder Point, and bringing that, was that bringing it back to council or bringing it back to the?
I'd be satisfied if we just brought it back to Transportation Commission, and as Mr. Shimoney pointed out, if we still have concern after that, we can always elevate it to council. But all I'm asking for tonight is that it go back to Transportation Commission, so that they can review what's actually going to be implemented.
We do already have direction on that, though, with three council members, so. Yeah, so thumbs up is good, too. But let's, yeah. Do you have anything else on this report, Trevor?
Your Honor, nope, I am good. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, then we will turn it over to Nicole.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. And let me just share my screen real quickly, and I will be providing the Sustainability Division's October report. And I just want to confirm that the council can see my screen.
Yep, please proceed.
Oh, I'm getting an error message. Let me start again. There we go. Fantastic. Well, as usual, sustainability has had a lot going on over the course of the last month, and I'm proud to start with some of our hot topics. And we co-hosted, along with Open Space and our friends in Stormwater, Make a Difference Day, where 15 volunteers worked to remove debris and vegetation blocking stream flow in the Rio de Flag. And the intent of Make a Difference Day this year was to improve water flow and help to mitigate potential impacts from future flooding. And we had about 15 volunteers who donated over 44 hours of their time servicing and reshaping and seeding just one-tenth of an acre, but they did remove seven yards of vegetation and debris. And of course, we always get excited when we get coverage. We also have a little bit of a competition in sustainability about above-the-fold coverage at the Daily Sun, but really excited to see this particular project getting the amount of coverage it did, as it's so important and critical to our community. Also, just wanted to share that the United Nations released its latest gap report titled "The Closing Window," and the report reiterates that climate action has not been rapid enough globally, and that the window is closing to hold warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius. And so I wanted just to point this out to the council, as the work that we continue to bring forward as a collective agency is so critical, and the actions that we are taking are aligning with a global call for action in terms of the climate crisis. Moving on down into our climate action updates, I'm just going to highlight a few things. In our equity and engagement, even though our climate team is small, we directly engaged with over 500 people in the month of October. And this includes students at Coconino High School and a variety of partners in the community and so forth. And although small, we are a fierce team, and our commitment to increase engagement is significant, and so we'd like to report on that to council to ensure that we are holding up our commitment in the carbon neutrality plan for engagement. We also, and this is a follow-up from our discussion last month, but the members for our Climate Equity Advisory Group have been selected, and the first meeting will be in November. So I'm very thrilled that we were able to move this forward, and there will be much more to come from the Equity Advisory Group. In our Building Fuel Switching and Reduced Energy Use Programmatic Areas, the Home Weatherization Rebate Program has already distributed $20,000 to residents to incentivize home weatherization and electrification. This amount represents 100% of our program's base budget or ongoing funding, and this is pretty consistent, year to year, that those funds are distributed within the first three to five months of the fiscal year. And of course, we do have supplemental funding available this year due to funding from the American Rescue Plan Act. We, I'd also like to thank Ramon Alatorre. He opened up his home during the Sustainable Business Tour to demonstrate home electrification retrofits on a 30-year-old home, and he welcomed over 30 residents into his home and shared information, best practices, and resources to support retrofit home electrification. And the Four Corners Carbon Coalition. In the Four Corners Carbon Coalition, we have officially welcomed the city of Salt Lake and the city of Santa Fe to our coalition. And noted in the report are some hyperlinks. And if there is time, I encourage the council to take a look. But we have launched our website for the Four Corners Carbon Coalition Initiative. And we still have an open application period. We are soliciting carbon removal projects in the concrete sector. And so we are going to be looking at proposals after December 19th and really excited to see what types of proposals have come in from the concrete sector to store carbon. And moving into our community stewards and litter prevention, really thankful to all of our volunteers. The service hours were significant in the month of October. We had over 660 hours volunteered are dedicated to trash removal. We had 338 volunteers who picked up 21 bags of recycling and 48 bags of trash. And here in the report, you can just see some photos of our very dedicated volunteers picking up trash in our community. And in our second month of Engage, Empower, and Elevate, the program has provided the CATS team with grants funding, as we've talked about in the past. And this is an incredibly impressive report out from the CATS team. They had 112 participants. The individual participant hours were 48, and the combined service hours were 331. They collected 83 bags of recycling, and 196 bags of trash were collected. I do want to say in the report, it was noted from Wendy White that the crew members who are participating in the program have been spreading the word about the program. And they are now receiving more requests for work than they can fill. And so I think it is important, and agree with Wendy in her report, that she noted that the desire to work dispels the common belief that unsheltered people are freeloaders. But the barriers they have to gain full employment are often impossible to overcome, and that this program is one step in correcting that measure. Moving on into food systems, pleased to announce another collaboration and success for a mini grant with Tara Byrd's Flagstaff Unified School District, our office, Arizona Community Foundation, and the Ita Hopi LaVaya received $20,000 from Partners for Places Mini Grant. And this award will be focused on assisting in planning, developing, and implementing a pilot assessment surveying green space and green schoolyard infrastructure needs across the FUSD. Some council members may recall that we are currently in a multi-year green schoolyards grant program right now with FUSD and Tara Byrd's. And so this is a really nice complement to that initiative. Additionally, there are some new functional artistic elements at the South Side Community Garden, thanks to a collaboration between the Sustainability Office, BPAC, and local artist Sonia London Hall. And you can see here in this photo, the new elements include a community garden sign, hanging flower baskets, and three benches. And additionally, the entrance to the garden is now defined by a gravel pathway, which is more accessible and decorative boulders. In our materials management effort, staff is working with NAU Public Health Capstone students to implement a composting initiative
That's great, though.
at Flagstaff Junior Academy. And sustainability staff members are also working with Flagstaff High School students and administrators to implement a school-wide recycling and waste reduction program. And in partnership with THROES and Solid Waste, staff collected residential leaves and pine needles for composting at NAU's composting facility. And of course, this initiative was made possible by the recently renewed NAU Composting IGA. This was such a successful event that we were overflowing many times in the receptacles for the residential leaves and pine needles. And then, following up, I just wanted to share some social media content. And our recent, excuse me, in October, our Facebook posts reached almost 11,000 people. And engagement on our webpage was over 1,200 reactions, commitments, excuse me, comments, shares, and clicks. And it's really important for us, as social media is a powerful tool that we use in terms of our behavior change and information sharing on all of our events. Speaking of events, we have a few more events coming up. This evening, our Climate Conversations Food Systems will be held at the Downtown Library. And this is, of course, our new partnership with our friends at the library to really open up the conversations to the community about climate action and impacts on our community. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Nicole. I'm not seeing any at this time. So thank you much. Moving on to general public participation. Nine, not seeing any cards or, oh, we do have one online. Okay, two online. Let's hit it.
One moment, please. Mayor and council, our first commenter is Jocelyn Salapi. Jocelyn, you can go ahead and address mayor and council. Jocelyn?
Good evening, everyone. This is not Jocelyn. My name is Lucinda Yaosi. I'm with Native Americans for Community Action. I want to say good evening to mayor, vice mayor, and council members. I am stepping in for Jocelyn at the moment. Like I said, I'm with Native Americans for Community Action. I'm a Supportive Services Case Manager. This evening, I want to invite you and community of Flagstaff to our Homeless and Hunger Awareness Week, which is going to be happening at the national level, is happening November 12 to the 19th. For Flagstaff, we are going to be hosting one on November 17th. We're going to be doing a symposium. And I just want to go over who our speakers will be. Our theme is "With Sehassen, Change is Possible." Sehassen means hope in Navajo. For our symposium, we're going to be talking about social detriments of health and COVID, indigenous perspective on homelessness, and how homeless impacts mental health and breaking the storm, COVID, and homelessness. We're also going to be having a speaker talk to social justice and homelessness. We do have a QR code on our poster, which is posted in the NACA website. We also have a link where people can register, and we can email that to you upon request. Our second event is going to be on November 19th. It is going to be held at the Senawa Middle School. We will be hosting a panel discussion from people with lived experience from the indigenous perspective. We're also going to have an introduction of the film The Man in the Dog Park, which was, excuse me, a description by the author and the co-author. We're also going to have a prayer and smudging, a community feast, a round dance, and you are all invited. On November 18th, we are going to be doing a Navajo taco or an Indian taco drive with a coat drive. So we will be collecting gently used winter attire at all our NACA locations in the Cedar Safeway Plaza. We also are going to have a Giving Tuesday, so please join us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Kay Pfeifer. Kay, you may go ahead and address mayor and council.
Thank you for hearing me, mayor and council. I appreciate it. And I'll make this as brief as I can. I know it's been a long meeting. But I'm here to talk about the presentation that I had with the Beautification Committee for the naming of the FUTS tunnel that goes, that connects to Fort Tethill Park for Ray Brody, Cosmic Ray Brody. And I just wanted to make you aware of that and express my appreciation for the Bicycle Committee and all the work that they're doing with the council. We had a meeting with them the other day, and I believe that our proposal to the Bicycle Committee was approved. And as well as the meeting that I had, the proposal that I made to the Beautification Committee, what was missing fundraising. Other than that, they were happy about the proposal and the idea is to put a plaque in the memory of Cosmic Ray, who actually has had quite a bit of influence in the Flagstaff community as a bicycler and providing bike clinics and, as well as many other things. But he's just been an inspiration to the community for bicyclers. So we have created a proposal to the Beautification Committee, as well as to the Bicycle Committee, to have that tunnel named and perhaps some murals painted throughout, through the tunnel, as well as a plaque in Cosmic Ray's memory. So that's what I'm here, to make you aware of that and to present it to the council here. And I've been working closely with Ted Malice, actually, in both, in all these projects. And he's, I have an email from him that said, let's see. Anyway, yeah, we're looking for fundraising. And also to commend Martin Ince in the passing of his proposal for the funding program for bicycles. So anyway, I thank you for this opportunity to make this presentation and to make you aware of our proposal. If you have any questions, you can add them now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kay. All right, that brings us down to agenda item number 10. I will note also the time, so let's be as brief as possible from here on out for the rest of the council meeting. But we are down to agenda item 10, informational items, two from mayor, council, and city manager, and future agenda item requests. I'll start with Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I was able to attend the Flagstaff Family Food Center 30th Anniversary Celebration on Saturday, which was wonderful, as well as yesterday, attending the AZ Humanities Event from Chief to Co-Talker for Profiles of the Navajo Co-Talkers with a presentation by Laura Tohe. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimoni?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, let's move quick before he changes his mind.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. Councilman McCarthy.
As the city manager mentioned, I attended the badging ceremony for the new firefighters. And the one thing that really stood out to me, the whole thing was very emotional and very positive. But the one thing that really stood out is one of the recruits gave a speech. And it was very moving, and I was very impressed with her ability to say something worthwhile. I wish I had that skill. And lastly, this morning, I saw the eclipse of the moon. Woo!
Thank you, Councilmember Sallis.
I didn't know people got up that early. Mayor, council, I would love to speak with you at greater length about my trip to Santa Monica with our Film Commission. It was a really wonderful, exciting time with a lot of great prospects. But with your leave, I will hold off on that conversation until another week.
Thank you. Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to our 10 new firefighters. It was a heartwarming and amazing experience to watch our new firefighters pinned and pinned by the members of their family. Not only they are joining Team Flagstaff, but they are joining a family of firefighters and their families. Thank you, the chiefs, and thank you, city manager, for inviting council to witness such an auspicious celebration. Tomorrow, I'm attending the Economic Collaborative Northern Arizona Board Meeting in the morning and in the afternoon, and I'm attending the Airport Commission. And also, congratulations to the Flagstaff Family Food Center for their 30th anniversary. I also had the opportunity to attend their event last weekend. And thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Meeting adjourned.